And trustee Green is listening and taking notes and they'll have an opportunity to discuss publicly up there when we get back to the other seven. So, the script is, right now, we just want to get your ideas. Everybody have an opportunity to give input about this question. What are the most important outcomes to you in public education? I'd like you to share your ideas.
Students who are ready to function as productive citizens in our society.
Look at the God that studied for the task here, man.
Are you a teacher?
Pretty much a second education God.
Oh wow!
That's what I was gonna say.
Wow, wow, that's good.
If you're God, then I'm the goddess.
Oh, and by the way, they are fabulous. They really are.
I gotta stay here.
You can stay here.
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta have some control over this here.
Nah!
We got a control freak over here. Jenna, what would you say?
I need to have some control over here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that hits the nail on the head for sure.
Yeah, we probably go to the next page.
Oh, get out of here.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
What do you think of that idea? That's pretty good, huh?
Seems pretty good.
Yeah, let me try to target that.
Somebody thought part of it.
Do you want to come join the circle or do you want to sit there?
I've been invited to the circle.
The circle of trust.
That's because she doesn't know.
I wanna see the number.
That's cool sound.
Careful what you're saying.
Did somebody screen in numbers here?
Jenna, what would you say?
Oh, I mean, I think, yes, productive members of society. I think standards are important, right? So, reading mathematical standards, obviously, for all of our students.
So mastering standards?
Mm-hmm. I also think, I think a whole child perspective. And that kind of, the first one, that's why I say that first one kind of hits the nail on the head because it's, function as productive citizens really kind of incorporates this whole child perspective of like, we're not just in it for, you need to read and you need to write. These, we need to be members of society that can give back. And healthy members of society are healthy in a lot of different ways. And you can't give back unless you're well-rounded and have emotional intelligence and all of those different things that make us productive citizens. So, I don't know how to summarize that, but I think you did in the first bullet.
Like the whole education God.
So mastery, mastery of standards and then, and then the whole child piece, somewhere they connect.
How's that?
Good.
Jenna, what do you?
That's true.
Can I draw a diagram?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I love them diagrams.
I am in a room full of teachers.
What could it say in the whole circle?
You get a good citizen.
Oh, got it.
But you're saying like what makes, what's-
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so for like standards, you can-
Teaching the whole child.
Well, I think she said it, emotional intelligence.
I think emotional intelligence can go in the whole. I think-
Social, emotional-
Social, emotional learning is a huge thing in our society that, you know, if we can't get along then we are where we are. And then, and I also think just health in general, certainly in America is a-
Wellness, health, fitness, all those things.
Yeah.
I would say building a strong foundation, educational foundation that helps students kind of focus that point to something that they're passionate about. So, I think if we don't help students find interests and passions and learn more about themselves in high school and they leave the building, we've failed.
So engage in learning, engage in discovery.
Yeah.
Something like that. Discovery.
I would like to see students prepared for the careers of the future, which we don't even know what those are right now.
Yeah. So how do you, so the question is, how do you prepare a student for the future where we're not sure what we're preparing them for necessarily? We have some ideas, right? Such as?
Well, that kind of goes along with-
Some skills, what are the skills?
What I was indicating is, I think, when students develop something that they're good at, passionate about, you know, it really gets them going, then, then they're the ones that are the innovators. They're the ones that are learning about what's next and pushing the field. And I, and it echoes to me a lot when students leave and come back and visit and they just don't know what they, they don't know what it was all about, you know? Nothing really drives them, nothing really, you know?
Remember the work we did on 21st century learners in the Plaxton Learner School, a little with the gears? I guess you remember those? Because it's right outside my office, I see it every day. The print's so small, I don't really see it, but those 21st century skills, you know?
I think that speaks, I mean, what you're saying in some way speaks to that whole child piece in that if you are socially and emotionally connected, you are more likely to find a passion, have a passion, and you're more into your kind of what you're all about.
Provide for those opportunities for discovery.
Rather than, I mean, what I have seen is it's like, well, I can take my tests, I do a great job on tests and I can do a great job and I hit all these standards, right? But then when I leave here, it's like-
Why?
Why?
Yeah, what do I do now?
And so, from a road perspective, from standards, that, that child is really hitting their mark. But from this social learning perspective, or passion, you know, in some ways it's similar, I think. They're, they're missing it. They're not, it's like the what for.
Yeah, and that's what I said at the beginning, is building this educational foundation, probably with the standards and things and then helping them focus it into what they-
That to me sounds like it's helping them find the relevance. The, because the idea of compliance is what I think we see a lot more of. School happens to kids, not I come to school because I know exactly what I want to have a day. So, the relevance piece is important. I even think perseverance, being able to help develop a sense of resiliency and perseverance. Because there's a lot of kids that don't know why they're learning algebra. But it, but the reality, and, and will they or won't they ever use algebra? But the idea is, are they able to work within and persevere, identify how to solve problems, get at, work in teamwork situation? These are at the 21st century skills. I'm trying to enumerate them at this point. But I mean, yeah, grit, they're very good. I mean, yeah, it's the, it's having, and maybe even a little bit of tenacity along the way. I mean, these are some-
Can I add one?
Sure.
Just something to say.
Critical thinker, yeah.
Need a better thinker?
I just, I just saw an interesting statistic that most of the people that are passing on fake news are actually 65 and older. And so, I think it's really important that all generations can take in information and critically form their own opinions and take action on it. Here's the social studies teacher.
And problem solving too.
And problem solving. And, and not just be led around by their noses a little bit. So, I think that the kids I'm seeing can, are starting to do that. And I think a lot of that has to do with, there's been a lot of focus on the core focuses on that a lot, which are standards, but starting to reap the benefits of it. We have a generation of kids that are running for office. We have more women in the House than the Senate than ever. You know, like, I just think that that, this is a democracy.
Public education is a stone to democracy.
This is critical, like, being able to do that.
So to be a, so to be a critical thinker and a thinker, but also to be able to function as a team.
Yeah.
To be able to collaborate, you know? Democracy requires that, it requires compromise.
You put a few kids to this district, you're on children. What are some things they learned or didn't when you wished they had or you're grateful? You've got one for the other in there.
I got one, and I, I think it actually speaks to a bit of the previous page, so it may be echoing a little bit. Dealing with the mastery level learning concept, and I know you guys have heard me talk about that because I now have, I have a kid in college who was awesome in high school for, by and large, did really quite well grade-wise. Getting kids to figure that the target is about learning, it's not the grade. Because the grades, I know that, I know that we train the public and trained our kids and even probably ourselves that the grade is some master number that sadly probably equates to dollars and cents to a lot of people in their mind. But it all means nothing if there's not real learning, authentic learning that's going on. And to me, that mastery level concept does two things. It provides a little more accountability on the student to own their learning because it's not, like I said, it's not, school's happening to me today. I actually know what I'm trying to accomplish right and I'm accomplishing it at that level. But I also think it also speaks very highly to the equity question when we talked about dealing with the achievement gap. Being able to set clear markers for kids. To me, I think those are, that's something I got out of it now, watching my own son. Well, I raised five kids and three went through this system, but first of all, I think the Blanca County School does an outstanding job with the whole, the academics, the, you know, the youngest one's a 4.2 GPA, blah, 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 really high performer. But, you know, you talk about the joy of learning and to learn, where's the pressure she's feeling right now? Is to have that big GPA, SAT, go to the big college, that's what she's, that's the world she's in right now. And, you know, it's gobbling her up. Rather than just having a joy of just learning, it's not that simple.
She junior, she not senior.
I, I would, I would add that most of us as educators, not necessarily, maybe any parent that maybe is with it, but it, as educators, the kids that are really knocking it off the park on those SATs and SATs and stuff, many of them aren't as, I mean, I know we're gonna say they're not, I mean, they're worried about that grade, but there's a lot of them naturally are able to like, they're focused in on class and doing it. The grade is just a natural byproduct sometimes of the things that they're doing. And even in classes that are not their passion, they at least know how to do it. Well, yes and no, they're motivated, certainly. Well, Amanda, what, what do you think? What would you say, Ruth?
Well, my mind goes kind of in a different direction, but I'd love for it to be on paper that I think an important part of education is to have passionate, inspired, happy teachers. Because I know there's a lot of focus on the kids, but I think that's a good way.
That's funny that you say that because when, when that question was asked, I've got kids in, in school now and I had one graduate last year. And I thought, the, the thing that I'm most grateful for is the teachers that inspire them. So, you know, I've got a daughter that just loves Anna Edwards, you know? And it's like, I hope she ends up like Anna Edwards, you know? Because she's an amazing person. So, like, if that's all my kid gets out of high school, right on, you know?
That's a good point.
For me, speaking of, my mom happy enough. Most of my kids are younger. I will have one going up to high school next year. I'll just, just for him. But it, just seeing the process of how they grow through elementary to middle school to high school. There's a process that goes from, you know, from their young to, you know, as they grow. And although, you know, we want the outcome is what happens when they exit our, our school district, I'd like to see that those aspects that we're talking about are applied throughout each level of their education. So, we're not, you know, we might not be thinking about a, you know, fourth grader's passion for what they like because their idea of what they want now might be different four years later. But if you find their passion in fourth grade or third grade, you'll be able to impeach that. So, I would, you know, that, that involvement of keeping them engaged in their education throughout elementary to middle school.
I would reiterate that. I mean, I've got two kids that are loving robotics and that's starting in sixth grade at the middle school. In fact, there are some schools that have it up to an elementary level. And the other thing about that is, you know, one is a girl and she is in an engineering program, but it's all boys. So, that's been cool because she's got some teachers who have given her encouragement in a boy world. So, I think that for me, sort of leveling that playing field, not just for our minority students, but also for our boys and girls. You know, math and science isn't just for boys. And how do we make those classrooms feel more inclusive?
Well, my daughter excels, that's, that's where she excels, in math and science.
I know, I know, she, she has.
So she's had a very good experience. Well, as you think about students getting into diploma and going out, what do they, what's, what's foundational? What's important to you? What does that represent to you as we get closer to seven?
One of the things I'd like to add to the second question, which I think we're probably moving on to that.
Yeah, we can go there, they're just in our paper.
One of the priorities, and of course I have a specific interest in this field, is I'd really like to encourage more computer science and coding curriculum at a very early age and throughout the curriculum, throughout the grade levels.
That's, coding has been out there a little, for a little while. It seems to me that it needs to pick up more momentum. Has it been?
I will tell you, robotics is a great place for that to, that actually is happening.
Because it's been offered for a while. Like, and the reason it's on my radar is I have a student, we're trying to, his, his big interest is gaming. Well, how do I engage him academically through that, that pathway? So we're looking for opportunities there.
Yeah, that's an interesting one because I think it was traditionally been our hardest classes to, to fill. And I've got a class that, that deals with web design and some web-based programming. And I thought, I'm just gonna get tons of kids in there because kids like my classes traditionally. It's been hard, so I don't know what the answer is to that. It's just a tough, uh-
Well, and I, I, I'm gonna go back again. I, when you look at me and Petra's an exceptional kid and my daughter is a little bit out there in terms of her comfort. But I would be curious to know statistically, how many of these classes are actually filled up with half-girls in them? And honestly, are we creating an environment where girls feel welcome and invited into that?
It has to start at a very early, early age. We can't wait till high school.
No, no, you can't.
Right, and I, I mean, I think your point of like, starting early and seeing it develop all the way through. I think, you know, programs that start early to try to tap into kids' natural curiosity and passion. I think the earlier you start, the more you develop this love of learning. And that starts in pre-K, this love of learning, whatever that is. For my daughter, it's reading. And it's this joy, I mean, she finds joy in that. And so, we're lucky enough where we have a support program for her within Gate that she can get extra challenging experiences like that, that encourage that passion of hers. And so, whatever it is, for her, it's not coding, but, but whatever that is, the programs that kind of just find the joy in learning, I think are important at all ages.
I think you catch your head up, sir.
Attract quality teachers.
Yeah, I see, can I see it? I mean-
Can I share our situation in the math department right now?
Sure.
We hired somebody, resident graduate of college, to teach math classes. She's a wonderful person, she's going to be great. I'm getting along, but-
And she's got, they're able to attract-
Kind of scared her yesterday, though.
Even her property teachers get scared.
I was gonna say, you can't, I, no, no, that should scare her enough.
Do you define quality?
I think everything that's been on these previous four pieces of paper defines it. It's the teachers that are going to do all those things that this group has just discussed. Inspire kids, help enjoy learning, create quality citizens, help them find their passions.
My thing, my thing as well with that is, is we talked about, you know, teachers and their influence on the other, as Amanda brought up on the other page. I think that we need to make it a priority to have an environment that inspires teachers as well and keeps them, you know, passionate about what they do.
Just one thing, to recap, a quality teacher, but to keep that quality teacher throughout the years, knowing?
Yeah, that's what we-
It's getting harder at the Blanca County Schools. Boise, the Boise area and its growth, the economy, their salaries are going up, their property values are going up.
When I moved here 13 years ago, I got a $7,000 raise and then I went to the district, moved back, up to another $7,000 raise.
Wow.
We've lost that much here. And the life, I love moving here, though. I actually, it's my train.
Yeah, I understand.
Can I throw another thought out for focus? Two, actually two, but one in particular is I think we need to really talk about, how are we communicating, engaging and bringing parents along on this ride? Because we do, we may have a vocal group that might be here talking about this with us here, but we serve a greater public and oftentimes looking at how do we communicate with the parents, necessarily. Not that they don't want to be a part of the process, but they have other factors and other things that are going on in their life that might be a different priority for them, so we still need to be reaching out to them and bringing them in. But I think another factor that is also in all this is the concept of flexibility. When we think about programming and we think about staffing options, we think, I mean, with every piece, every piece of gymnastics we put into this, for all the opportunities there, it does come, I mean, this is a budget night, so it does come usually with a dollar and cents. And so, we have to start figuring, how can we be a little more flexible with not only funding and as such, but also how do we, how do we engage each other to create opportunities? Rather than, rather than just thinking we can just buy a program or we can just, you know, hire another program area, people into certain areas. It's like, how, how can we figure that one out?
Yeah, I agree with that. I also think that it, that is married with communication too. I think we could do a better job in our school district, selling to the public the amazing things that we do in our district because sometimes we hear in the paper from a minority of people that say, well, our test scores or whatever else. And I just want to say, come to my classroom, see what I do. I don't do, I don't deal a lot with state testing, but I have an amazing program, you know? And it's, so I think selling those incredible programs that we offer is, is important. And then I think that leads to the ability to be creative and keep creative programs and helping kids develop passions like we were talking about before.
And why we have them.
Right, why we have them.
Not only that we have them, but, but why do we have them? So that the parent, and I have my parent had on, but the parent who maybe doesn't have a student with that interest or that program still understands, hey, my kids don't involve in this, but, but here's why we have this program over here. I think that part's important. Sometimes maybe we miss the, the why behind-
That's well said, yeah.
Program. At all levels, not, and just at elementary, not just at high, you know, not just at the high school, but at elementary as well.
And I also think a priority is we, we may need to figure out how, how do we tap into the kid itself and him or herself as the resource of voice of students, what are they? Sometimes we kind of, it's easy for, it's, it can be easy to channel our resources the way we see it and making decisions because this is the traditional staffing we've had or this is that. And we're not, we're not, and maybe it speaks to the flexibility side of what I'm saying about, but part of that flexibility has got to come from student voice, you know? We've got to be able to tap into what they're thinking and what they're feeling. How is school impacting them?
Best teaching I do is when I listen to the best. You know, I, I'm gonna go back here, hopefully, dear John. I believe every person in this room tonight is white, is the whole big group. And 40% are kids of Latino. And I don't know what else we can do, it seems like.
Yeah.
We do a lot, but we still have to change this.
That's a nutwork, correct.
And I don't know how to do it, and I think that a few Jeffers have been made.
It's on the table. I think asking that question though, right there is, is definitely starting to in the right direction. Most definitely.
And I, I have to be optimistic and believe that as more of our Latino parents, our people who are educated in this country and perhaps in the school district, it'll get better. But that's maybe five, 10 years old still.
I think that's a good budget question.
Can we voters?
And I, this is a shameless plug though, but with your experience you've had this year, it really opens up a lot of the eyes, being right on the front lines and being communicating with families. So, that's a great point.
I think if, you know, if we're talking about priorities, you know, we talk about equity and we say the word equity. What is that, I mean, if that's truly a priority, how are we, what does that really look like in Blanca County?
How do you measure it?
How do you measure it? And, and what does it mean to be equitable? For, especially with that 40% population. And then we also have this north-south. I don't know if you guys have noticed.
North of the dump, south of the dump, yes.
The south side.
Well, and a lot of it is unfortunately perception. And I think there's a lot of perception that needs to change.
Well, perception is reality to people, and I think that's what we're trying, I think that's-
How do we, how do we change the perceptions of, of, you know, society?
Is my 40% number accurate?
It's pretty close.
Are you on purpose?
I didn't want to put something up there.
Might be, might be one or two takes higher.
Well, your name, I didn't write. Glenn said this.
But it is a record.
According to Glenn. The world according to Glenn.
So, so how many core standards, graduation requirements? You know, certain kids need certain levels of support, so from a budget standpoint.
Oh, I got one.
Oh, good.
And I don't know how you turn this into a budget item, but it's definitely a schedule item. Less stress. And that's the whole child. We have a super stressed-out population of kids. Especially a super, super stressed-out group of kids. And I have an abnormally number, normal number of students with anxiety disorders that are diagnosed and are having full-blown panic attacks in the middle of the day.
You take them five AP classes.
Right. So-
That's a good point.
I, I go back to that- I, I go back to that, how do we?
How do we better promote?
How do we?
The whole child.
The whole child and, and maybe it's our, it's, it's our demands, our graduation requirements, the things, the outcomes are creating this stress that we want, are creating this stress level. I mean, my daughter included, three days last week in my room in tears, so.
I think a lot of that's our perspective on what's important to them, you know, and maybe it goes to us listening more to the students because we believe what we tell them. We tell them they need to take three AP classes, that's what they think they should do, you know? And I, I think that, don't get me wrong, I think AP classes are important. I think that goes back to that whole earlier discussion about what are you passionate about? What drives you? What, what's unique about you and your education? But saying it's not, not for everybody.
And you're right, because, you know, you ask that question to a young person, there's a lot of, there's, there's a few of them that are gonna say, I can, that's what my passion is, I can do it, and they can do it. And there's some looking going, well, that's my friend, and they're doing it, I probably ought to be doing that too then, so I guess that's my passion? You know, and, and that, it piles itself on. And the expectations that come from parents, maybe educating them about some things, the idea that's back to the educating part.
Well, and I'm an AP teacher, so I get it. I want kids to take my class, but I also, I've seen a push in the last few years to get that number, more of this population as an equity piece engaged in those classes, and I don't feel like we've given them social emotional tools and necessarily the study tools to be ready for that level of rigor.
So, so is the whole child?
Yeah.
The whole child, when you think of the Latino population is, are we addressing the whole child, their needs?
Well, so, I, I think two things here. And maybe just once, this is not just a high school, I think it's mostly a high school issue, but I don't think it's just a high school issue. In more and more years than I'm a principal, I've seen more and more, you know, elementary, elementary kids too, with the social emotional. I don't, it, it, it's not grades and centered towards, hey, I have to perform academically there, but I've seen it more, and I bet you it at the middle school as well. The other thing I was gonna say, I mean, it's kind of inside, but to just, just as a parent, if, if the teachers are telling the kid, you need to take three AP classes or that's the vibe, as a, as a parent, I don't, you can't turn that off. I was, I've been unable to turn that off. And I don't think I'm the only one. So that whole, you know, and, and maybe, I don't know, maybe that's a community, parent, teacher, bigger conversation.
Yeah, I think looking at the bigger picture.
I don't have a culture.
Really.
I don't know how to write that. I mean, as a parent and as a teacher, a dirt child.
I'm trying to get that, but I'm trying to get that to come down.
I know.
That brought up something that really brings me back to where Kelly was a few moments ago, it's about how to be able to develop and build, and it's a word that I picked up today in a conversation with Dr. Holmes, actually, when we were talking about different things, just executive functions in kids. But thinking of the social emotional side, but the executive function, helping stu, helping kids be able to develop a concept of time management and organization and, and self-efficacy, even in self-advocacy, but in building and scaffolding that process so that by the time they're starting as elementary students and moving them through, that, because when I think of the, the population of students that we, that I know I stress about in, what minute? Percentages of students that are.
We have one minute.
Yeah, that are making the end goal, it's their language, like it functions, they get us there.
These are good, they want some.
You know, wrap this up, everybody.
Just closing with that AP thought, I think that it's, that's all part of this big picture of programs, though, and I think, I think it needs to be written that, that programs are extremely important. Having a diverse and large variety of programs for students to explore and help them do these things.
Right, because we've talked about it on the first question.
Yeah.
As, you know, what's important, but this is a priority, is something, programs that are gonna help students find joy and passion in learning and education, so that they're not as stressed out.
Yeah.
So that they can have a better mental health and a better.
And that's why programs like yours are so important.
Yeah. Well, and I think all of them, I think whatever it is, robotics, reading, whatever it is for that child, as they grow, the sooner that they find something that's meaningful to them, the less stress there is in it, because it's joy. You know, what, are you, think of something that's joyful in your life, does that stress you out? Think of something that's hard, you know, anyway. So I think those programs.
Stresses them out.
And as Amanda said, great people to build those programs, to fill them.
Thank you for being here, everyone, and Amanda especially, you know, thank you for coming.
Am I the only non-school district?
She's not an employee, but she's.
We're wearing a different hat.
Thank you guys.
We're wearing our community hair.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I am trustee Mandeville, I'm the vice chairman of the school board this year, and I really appreciate you coming out after a snowy day and challenging, at times challenging driving conditions today, so thanks for coming. I've got my clipboard here, so I'll be, I'm, tonight I am listening, I am taking notes. We have a couple of questions. The first one, and I've got my, oh, this is Brad Hemson, well, all of you deserve it. This is Brad Hemson, he's the principal at Alcoras Elementary School.
Daniela Nunez.
And she, and you.
And I teach fourth grade at Alcoras.
And this is.
Val Thomas, teaches English at the high school.
That's a good, three years, like, sixth grade math teacher.
And this is Aiden Sanchez, he is the second grade teacher at Alcoras.
Why don't you go around everybody and just. That'd be great, that'd be great, if you would be so kind, so.
Okay, I'm Melody, and I'm in eighth grade.
Excellent. So thank you for those who are coming, thank you for joining us. Just a real quick, brief recap, I'm Ella Mandeville, I'm on the school board, these are staff with the school, they're helping me out tonight, and we just have a couple of questions for you, and I just listen to what you're saying, I'm gonna sort of take down notes as soon as I can. So the first one is, what, what are the most important outcomes in public education for you? So, that's the question, if I, I'd be, would like to respond to it.
I really want to hear from everybody, so please, you know, let's share the room, share, share your voices, don't dominate, but would love for everybody to put their ideas out there, the board would love to.
I really love the programs that we offer with public, public education, we have a lot of great partnerships in the community, like Sun Valley, Summer Symphony, Footlight Dance, we've got a lot, we just have a lot of connections with a lot of local nonprofits, which I think is huge, Chumri Coalition, everything, a lot of integral programs that are supported.
Okay, who's next? Don't speak one. And also, as we go around, I'd love to give everybody a chance to speak once before any one person speaks again, so it's not that you can't speak again, but I'd love everybody to have a chance to speak again. So we've got some teachers up here, they'll start calling out people.
Remember, education is a continuum, kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, so think about your children's experiences, your experiences when you were in school, what was important to you, what was valued by you, what you, what you wish was part of your education, or you really want to continue your education at all those levels.
I think equity is really important, but I think it would be really good to try to bring the word equity down to sort of sidewalk talk, to help us understand what equity means. So, I don't know if you can do that with us right now, because it would be nice for everybody to understand why we're, why we think that's important. We heard there'd be a base funding and then there would be additional funding to establish equity, so it'd be good to understand. Sorry.
Well, we were, those were questions that we, that was, we were supposed to put things like that in a parking lot and try to serve this, I mean, basically, we have lots of students with lots of needs in our school, some require a lot more needs, but we want everybody to have equal access to education, no matter what school they go to, those educational opportunities. For some people to be able to do that, they need an extra support in order for them to be successful in the general education classroom. Other students might even need another support on top of that as well, but we want all students to be able to experience their public education the same across the board, have access to everything that anyone else has access to.
So that could be from language support, more support for children with autism or special needs, to just making sure that every kid has breakfast, so that they can focus on their education, there are a lot of different things that work out to the level where they can be there to learn.
I just might interject and add, so one of the ways that I heard it described is how is equity different from being equal? And so equal would be if I had ten of something I would give, and I had ten people, I'd make sure that everyone has one of those things, one apple for every person. But really, of that group of ten, maybe one person needs more apples than the other person, and so that's equity. So there's a, that's the difference between being equal and then being equitable.
especially in the high school, so the teachers push them when they get pushed, allow them
Or maybe they're allergic to apples, so they need something else. Come on.
extra time when they have, you know, they need allowances to turn the work in, lots of teacher support.
So then I bring you back to this word, outcomes, that means when we're done. So when you have graduated, when you have graduated, when you have graduated, when your children have graduated, what should they be armed with when they leave, when they have school?
Well, that's, I think that's one of the first things that I wanted, saw when it said outcomes is, and we've had this discussion a lot at the high school too, is we've got, within our district, the big push is to go on to college, 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 college. And having taught for twenty-five years or more, college is not for everyone, and we have students that would, maybe they can't afford to go to college, maybe that's not for their best interests, maybe that's not where their skill set is, and I think what would be so beneficial to our kids, not just, you know, educating the students so that they can go on to college if they choose to do so, or, you know, guide them in that direction, but also have other venues for those students so that when they do leave high school, they're prepared to have a job within our community or a community. It does not have to be, you know, there's so many service industry jobs that are needed, and there's so many students that would just go crazy if we have auto mechanics, auto body, cosmetology, some of these trade schools that machines are not gonna replace, that kids could have those skills. We do have some things like the, the construction academy, and we've got the food academy, culinary, we do have, what's the other one, the computer, you know.
BKA.
BKA, whatever thing.
International technology.
What's the other one we have? Oh, the med tech. So we are, we do have some of those things, but I also think some of the hands-on skills that machines aren't gonna be cutting their hair or something like that, there's so many kids that could thrive in that environment, and I don't think that we address those needs.
Great.
John, that would be totally weird, but will you just add that, Betty, like, more than just high school ready, or high, post-high school readiness, like, other trades, like college and other.
College.
Other careers.
I wrote that.
Nice.
That's cool.
Would also keep a lot of kids in school.
I don't love your writing, but maybe, since I'm also a teacher at the high school, I can speak to something some of you feel strongly about as well, but I think that after graduation, any kid should have a well-rounded appreciation for the arts and losing touch of that in any way, whether it's funding or just not being attentioned to in high school. Fair.
Yes.
And I can say everyone is teaching.
Erica, when you started, you were talking about all of our partnerships, can you be more specific about what you, how, how you hope, what we do here and what they, how the, what you meant?
Well, so I grew up in the valley, so I got to benefit from a lot of the programs that the school district partnered with, and so with it being so accessible with BCRD or Footlight Dance, hundred politicians knew where they went when I was in school, but those were the things that enriched what we do, and I think they're really important for, for the kids who don't have a niche, you know, it's, it's another opportunity for kids to find another group to be involved in, maybe a passion that they want to pursue. So that's kind of what I meant by that. No, that's not kind of, that's what I meant.
I think for me, it's really important that they feel like they belong while they're here, because it's so scary to go off into the world for those who do leave the valley. So I think just ensuring that they feel like they have a place and are part of the community is very important on the emotional side of life.
We have not heard from everyone in the room.
High schoolers, what, what would you like to leave here with when you go to college? Or are you a citizen trade school, or you're gonna get a job?
Well, I think the extracurricular activities like clubs and sports, you know, everything that we offer is really important for students to participate in, and I would really see those leave this school, or lack of funding or anything like that, because it really grounds those students, states, lifestyle, using extra skills that they don't necessarily want to. tal vez una pasión que quieren perseguir. Así que eso es lo que me refiero a eso. No, eso no es "como", eso es lo que me refiero a eso.
Creo que para mí es realmente importante que se sientan como si pertenecieran mientras están aquí porque es tan peligroso ir a la vida, para aquellos que dejan el valle. Así que creo que solo asegurarse de que se sientan como si tuvieran un lugar y son parte de la comunidad es muy importante en el lado emocional de la vida.
No hemos oído de todos en la sala.
¿High schoolers, qué? ¿Qué te gustaría estar aquí cuando vayas a la universidad? ¿O vas a un colegio comercial o vas a conseguir un trabajo?
Creo que las actividades extracurriculares como los clubes y los deportes, ya sabes, todo lo que ofrecemos es realmente importante para los estudiantes participar en. Y realmente no veo que esos le despidan, o no tienen financiamiento o algo así porque realmente es base para los estudiantes. Si tienen habilidades adicionales que no necesariamente quieren.
Definitivamente, saliendo de lo que dijo, como una persona bien adaptada, tal vez
sí tenga, no sé, tal vez una clase real world que pueda enseñarte.
Como si no fueras a la universidad, que te enseñe regularmente, oh, esto es cómo puedes hacer tus tasas, esto es cómo puedes hacer tu lavandería, como, solo habilidades reales.
Sí, ¿verdad?
Posibles.
Eso es genial, eso es genial. Probablemente hay muchas personas que te aprietan. Es una buena idea.
Creo que esa es una de las razones por las que la participación en estos programas de comunidad es tan importante porque muchos de esos habilidades pueden ser aprendidas mientras están trabajando o involucrados en estos programas de comunidad. Así que sí, creo que eso es genial, pero lo he visto en acción. He visto estas cosas que los estudiantes han estado pidiendo y no necesariamente en una clase, pero aprendiéndolas debido a las relaciones que este distrito escolar de la county de Blaine ha tenido con los socios aquí en el campus de comunidad. Así que específicamente, especialmente para mí, siendo la maestra de high school drama, eso es mi preocupación porque parece que, parece que tenemos una relación realmente buena ahora mismo donde todavía estamos kind of fostering that idea of teaching the whole child, ¿ok? Que creo que tal vez va a perder un poco, así que supongo poner eso bajo la participación en programas de comunidad como una forma de hacer eso, pero también habilidades de pensamiento artístico, creo que son, supongo que tal vez como una forma de habilidades de pensamiento critical. Quiero decir, creo que lo he visto pasar también donde los estudiantes, cuando descubren que pueden amar leer un play y pueden leerlo desde la perspectiva de los escritores, el actor, el diseñador de la escena, el diseñador de la luz, el costumador. Eso puede ser bastante poderoso porque hay muchas opciones solo en ese mundo, solo en esa experiencia. Así que supongo que realmente una de las razones por las que estoy aquí es que siento que estamos exitosos aquí en el campus de comunidad haciendo eso con los programas aquí. Y realmente me gustaría, como uno de los resultados, mantener eso.
Y yo apoyo eso. Como maestra de cuarto grado, muchos de mis estudiantes de cuarto grado vienen después de la escuela para bailar, dan danza, todo tipo de danzas.
Sí, es un lugar ocupado.
Es increíble tener esto aquí.
Sí, y si lo ves desde lejos, a veces puedes ver que es realmente una máquina muy bien ventilada, pero al mismo tiempo, hay mucho pasando.
Sí.
Y no sé, es un lugar agradable y emocionante para enseñar.
No he estado aquí mucho, pero tengo la sensación de que llevó mucho tiempo para construir esto.
Bueno, es único.
Pero es genial porque entonces en otros días van con la Fundación de Escolarización de Ski y van a esconderse, y luego tienen, ya sabes, deportes clubes y hay tanto que ver con esto.
Vamos a volver a la equidad por un minuto solo para ver qué escribimos allí. Escribí charla de lado y mejor explicaciones. Pero también creo que, no recuerdo si empezamos a hablar, pero podríamos definir un poco al proporcionar apoyo para todas las participaciones emocionales, académicas, tipos de, ¿cómo dirías eso? Apoyo.
Apoyo a la educación.
Sí, apoyando no solo academicamente, sino emocionalmente y también con las actividades extracurriculares como el drop. Creo que eso podría ser otra forma de explicar la equidad.
Apoyo a la desarrollo infantil.
Sí.
Supongo que tal vez una palabra que viene a mi mente cuando oigo eso es equilibrio, ya sabes. Creo que los alumnos más exitosos que veo son los que pueden encontrar ese equilibrio entre, supongo, tal vez, ya sabes, una academia, ahora esta es una palabra cansadora, rigurosidad académica, así que se pueda decir, pero también tener el tiempo para poder hacer estos esfuerzos artísticos que, no sé, danles a él o ella una buena experiencia en la high school. Esa es una cosa que siento que estoy viendo menos y menos otros estudiantes teniendo una buena experiencia en la high school. Ya sabes, y si no fuera por una buena experiencia, ya sabes, por, yo fui a la high school aquí en este edificio, ya sabes, pero tuve una buena experiencia y eventualmente me llevó de vuelta a enseñar, quiero ver más de ese aprecio y ese hambre de, quiero de alguna manera poder perseguir eso, lo que sea que vaya después de la high school. Baseball, sí. Baseball, futbol.
Tengo una pregunta clarificada, si eso está bien. Gracias, no quiero salir demasiado rápido. Anyway, pero lo que estoy diciendo, la participación en programas de comunidad, las actividades extracurriculares, ya sabes, tal vez en los niveles más allá, a menudo tenemos aprendizaje basado en proyectos. ¿Dirías que la participación en actividades de comunidad, la participación en las actividades extracurriculares es como aprendizaje basado en proyectos, pero más como aprendizaje real que ayuda a los estudiantes a poner todos los valores y todo lo demás en práctica, en una especie de balance, ¿no?
No, como para lo que estoy hablando con los programas, es un piece adicional. Así que como para mí, crecí como bailarina y nadie, así que eso era BCRD y Footlight Dance. Esas piezas eran como la pasión afuera de la escuela. Era algo que podía hacer que fuera disfrutable, si no era competitivo, era relajante y simplemente complementaba la educación.
Correcto.
Así que son realmente complementos de la educación, pero porque nuestro distrito escolar se alinea tan bien y trabaja tan bien con esos programas, quiero decir, creo que uno de ustedes podría haber dicho, aprendes de los deportes y programas como esos cómo trabajar como equipo, cómo comunicar con personas con las que puede no irse de acuerdo todo el tiempo. Esas son cosas que tal vez en clase no saldrían si no tienes esos escenarios en clase. Así que es un tipo diferente de aprendizaje en esos programas, pero no sé si usaría como mi matemáticas en equipo de nadie.
Correcto.
Si eso es...
Es una forma importante de ser bien adaptado.
O bien, sí.
Te enseña otros deportes y actividades, enseña cosas como habilidades de gestión de tiempo y solo cosas pequeñas que realmente necesitan hacer en la vida, que no necesariamente aprenden en una escuela regular.
Bueno, también he notado, como educadora, que los estudiantes que participan en esos clubes y actividades, realmente encuentran conexiones y amigos.
Y están investigando sus calificaciones.
Y facilita nuevas relaciones también.
Pero también encontrando a personas que tienen los mismos gustos como tú o tienen el mismo interés.
Probablemente me molestaré por esto porque no creo que esté supuesto a hablar, pero como, ¡ella entró! No, pero miro alrededor de esta sala y no puedo evitar pensar en las diferentes culturas y si es acceso a francés o español o las diferentes comunidades latinos o los artes. Hay tantas cosas que el distrito ofrece y creo que es una cosa extraordinariamente valiosa que tenemos para nuestros estudiantes, tener la exposición a esas diferentes culturas y tener sus propias culturas.
Así que supongo que cuando estamos hablando de prioridades, no estamos allí todavía, supongo, pero me pregunto si hay suficiente counseling que ayude a las personas a investigar diferentes formas de ir para poder lograr estos resultados que hemos visto.
En cuanto a los estudiantes poder elegir o ser conscientes de eso.
Bueno, sería bueno tener alguien ayudándome a figuring out what's available y qué podría querer hacer y kind of hold my hand a little bit, take me down the hallway. I mean, it just sort of, I mean, it seems like you could, I remember this one guy that sat next to me in school, this is a long time ago, but he never did anything, but I really think, I feel bad in a way thinking about him because maybe I could have helped him as a fellow student, but I wasn't sort of empowered to do that. Así que me pregunto si tenemos suficientes personas que son empoderadas para ayudar a los estudiantes a hacer más que el tiempo.
Ok, así que vamos a dejarlo ahí. Por ahora, lo que vamos a hacer ahora es que vamos a pasar adelante.
Empoderar a los estudiantes.
Tengo algunos post-it notes de que si la gente tiene preguntas o cosas que quieren agregar a la parada de parking, simplemente me envíen, les daré. Vamos a pasar a la segunda pregunta y estas son, esto es solo un comienzo. Este es el comienzo de lo que estábamos pensando. Y luego esta, la segunda pregunta es, ¿cuáles son las prioridades que el distrito escolar de Blaine debería enfocarse para lograr las cosas que hablamos antes?
Qualificado, super emocionado, encantado. ¿Cómo dices que es cualificado? Enga, como están emocionados, están emocionados de estar allí. Está bien. Streaming podcast.
Solo quería decir algo de lo que Wendy dijo, como ayudar a una persona por el pasillo. Y no sé cuántos años ha pasado ahora, incluso tres o cuatro, pero teníamos el día de los novios donde los novios vinieron a la high school, fue tan maravilloso, los niños se sentaron calmos y al final pudieron ir a todas sus clases. Y creo que en un punto o dos tuvimos como un sistema de amigos o tal vez cuando los senores vinieron y se reunieron con los novios. Y creo que eso realmente ayuda a los niños de octavo a noveno grado, les hace sentir cómodos, que hay un mayor, en lugar de los senores acosando a los novios, tratando de encontrar algún lugar calmo y ayudarlos a través de ese proceso transicional.
O hacerlo en la escuela media también.
Bueno, lo siento que nos tiramos ese programa porque los novios lo amaron y pensé que era bueno, sí, fue bueno.
Yo creo que hacen, introducen cosas como el boxeo de Pittsburgh en la escuela media. Hacen cosas así cuando mi hija entró a noveno grado, así que hice mi propia personal, como, hey, vamos a caminar por la escuela y hacerlo un poco más.
Pero no todos, sí, pero no todos los niños tienen esa oportunidad. Así que queremos levantar eso o crear vínculos entre otros grupos de estudiantes en la escuela.
Todavía no hemos oído de pocas personas en esta sala que quieran preguntar. Quiero asegurarme de que todas las voces han sido oídas. Cualquier cosa que quieras ofrecer. No hay nada malo, no hay nada malo que decir.
Excepto Brad shouldn't say that.
Así que, ¿cuál es la cualificación emocional y desarrollo adecuado de apoyo social? ¿Nos dan todo lo que hablamos antes? ¿Es eso todo lo que necesitamos?
¿Qué tal mantener las asociaciones comunitarias, mantener y construir asociaciones comunitarias?
Bueno, creo que como estudiante, creo que los profesores realmente necesitan animarnos a tomar cursos rigurosos y clases de maestra porque no hay requisitos. Y creo que muchos niños simplemente no saben que esas clases están disponibles para ellos y no aprovechan eso.
Y adecuación.
Y exposición y animación y todas esas cosas.
Bueno, permítame hablar en español. Yo creo que todo lo que están, está recibido ahí es exactamente lo que creo que debe ser el proceso de entrenamiento. Yo más que nada quisiera, si me permite, referirme a otra cosa que es respecto a la escuela, pero no miserablemente a la educación, sino más bien a tratar de alguna manera a los estudiantes, principalmente de la escuela secundaria y la preparatoria, que se les diera otro tipo de clases con respecto a los malos hábitos que no deben de tener, los malos, los malos hábitos que hay en torno a la sociedad en la que están viviendo, para que no puedan caer en ellos, llámese alcoholismo, llámese drogas. Ahora, lo que sí también estaba considerando, permítame, esto no es exactamente con respecto a la propia educación, pero sí...
Pero todo es parte de la educación, todo el programa que hacemos.
Sí, no, gracias, pero sí, o sea, de hecho repercute en el rendimiento educacional de los alumnos en cuanto a que, no sé, estaba tratando de ver de alguna manera qué es lo que se pudiese hacer para que hubiese más vigilancia alrededor de las escuelas, para que los niños, los estudiantes, no puedan tener muchos momentos solos porque ahí es donde repercen estos malos hábitos que redundan en la educación. No sé si hay alguna manera, si ustedes lo han considerado, de que pudiese haber, qué tipo de vigilancia.
Así que él dice que todas las cosas que hemos puesto aquí, él cree que están todas escritas y tiene algunos libros con ellos. Gracias, pero también él fue uno, oh, él cree que sería importante tener educación regarding life skills and healthy habits for high school, middle school and high school kids and beyond, especialmente, like beyond health classes, especially surrounding alcohol and drugs and unhealthy habits that kids fall into later in life. Y antojando a eso, él dice que sería una prioridad importante tener más vigilancia alrededor de lo que los niños hacen alrededor y afuera de la high school, como la hora de la comida y, ya sabes, cuando solo están quedando en los campos escolares o cerca, qué podemos hacer para evitar que fallen a esos malos hábitos temprano, justo aquí debajo de nuestra vista.
Más actividades.
Más actividades.
Exactamente así, las actividades, bueno, de hecho ya están marcadas ahí, pero las actividades van todos finalmente porque de alguna manera están obligados, pero a las malas acciones no están obligados y van porque quieren o porque alguien los atrae. Entonces eso es lo que de alguna manera yo quisiera, quisiera que se considerara cómo se podría hacer, no solamente a la hora del receso, sino lamentablemente he visto en la mañana algunos estudiantes que vienen y vienen fumando o se dan vuelta por otras calles y comienzan a fumar antes de llegar a la escuela. Entonces, yo sé que es difícil, pero qué es lo que se podría hacer, porque ello repercute en el aprendizaje. No, sí, mi pregunta era si usted lo había considerado o además de esto, bueno, si no lo han, obviamente, posiblemente no lo hubieran considerado porque no hay una respuesta de su parte, ¿verdad? No hay problema, esa consideración, de hecho, todos son una consideración de lo que, cuáles son las las prioridades y si no, qué es lo que se pudiese aumentar por un lado y por otro lado, la verdad es que no sé si tengan clases específicas en cuanto a la prevención.
Así que, esto no es realmente una Q and A, pero es solo pregunto si ya tenemos esto, si tenemos clases destinadas para los niños que caen en malos hábitos porque él ha visto personalmente a estudiantes, ya sabes, fumando, no hay de la escuela, como saliendo por las calles y cosas así, y que eso realmente afecta a su educación.
Así que, ¿cuáles apoyos tenemos actualmente para apoyar nuestros estudiantes con hábitos saludables afuera de la escuela? Tenemos aproximadamente tres minutos. Pedro, ¿hay algo que quisieras agregar? Ben.
Lo que yo quisiera comenzar viene siendo parecido a lo que estaba diciendo que en algunos momentos para los padres es un poco difícil controlar a los hijos con lo que están haciendo fuera de la casa. Sé que no es la responsabilidad completamente de los maestros de... Sé que no es la responsabilidad completamente de los maestros de cuidar a cada niño, pero sí estaría de acuerdo con Incepio si fuera posible de una manera de poner un poquito más de vigilancia fuera del escuero.
Parte de eso sería quizás de educación para los padres, algo así le gustaría ver? Como ayuda para que todos juntos vigilamos a los niños o qué, qué pongo en la lista que necesitamos como prioridad?
So, the conference that we went to for the Conexiones, I think part of the thing that the administration is working on is trying to find ways to better communicate with parents and also better support students in the building, like in the bathrooms even. I mean, at the high school it's face to face, so I think it all plays part of that. And I think maybe a simple answer would be that it is a known priority and that admin sent a very large team to California and it is totally on the radar and it's, I mean, it's just a slow process of supporting that, but I think it is huge. We need to have better communication with parents, we need parents on board to support the staff, it's a community effort, we have to be a village to make students feel like they want to be at school and sober when it comes to school.
So he was saying he wanted to piggyback on what was said before and how it's a priority for them to, for students to not fall into those unhealthy habits and how that we work together with parents to prevent that from happening. Y lo que contestaría es que ya es una prioridad y hay un montón de personas en el distrito yendo a conferencias, entrenamientos para tratar de llegar a una solución o algo que podemos hacer, pero ya está en el radar, es algo que estamos mirando, estamos tratando de apoyarles en la escuela, que sea un lugar seguro donde vienen a aprender, no fumar o...
Speaking of that, is that last year on the Wellness Committee, I was on the Wellness Committee and one of the people we were focused, what we were focusing on was substitute in the middle school, there's an uptick, and what could be done about that to catch it sooner than we're already going? So it has been on the radar and I think in the January meeting, if I recall it gender correctly, we're having a presentation on what could be put in place to have better education opportunities.
And the questions that we've come up with, I think, I believe the idea is that Heather, these will be answered on the website, so you can go to the website to answer the questions that have been generated, but we only have about thirty more seconds, so is there anything that somebody would like to add to this?
Esas preguntas que nos preguntaron, las van a contestar en la página web de la escuela.
One of the, they brought up trades and how we would incorporate trades somehow to work on that.
I was gonna say Millie, I think, has been a really great resource. If we know what schools want or what's available to kids as far as professions, what courses they need to take to get into those professions, are we offering them? I think Millie and is it...
So counseling?
Yeah. I think, well, I think, what does it look like after school? Because if we're looking at putting them in college, careers, trades, what do they have to be able to do to get there? I think that has to be something that they should be able to achieve in school to get there.
Track, identify tracks.
I think this needs, I mean, as an elementary teacher, I think this needs to, I mean, spread the discipline socially. I feel that this all starts in pre-K, kindergarten, these are things that we, I mean, we start with our curriculum, the healthy, I don't teach it because I'm dual language, but we go over these habits, so they're being educated at the young level. One other thing I think that we should really, like our priority should be is, you know, pre-K, so I really think that's something that we need. And it's offered, but not every school is allowed, tourist, not specific, so, I mean, that's where it really starts.
Okay, so I have post-its, so I don't want anybody to think they were shut, to think that they were shut out, Ben. So if you need me to, if you need to say anything, you can still write it on here and we'll get it on the paper, or you can talk to one of us and we'll get it on the paper, but thank you so much, this is the first up, and we need to hear from you. The school district wants to hear from you because it should be a communal voice, not just the voice of one, it should be the voice of all.
So when we go back into the other room, is the trustee's job to synthesize and talk about what we heard? If I know, if I forget to mention something that I heard, I did hear you, I'm not super great at quickly then re-say what we heard. I mean, it hasn't gone away, I wrote down what everybody said, so I will do my best to, I'll probably just go through them. Just, but I'll do my best, but just, this is an area of where I need more supports. Anyway, I will do my best to, and maybe, you know, I'm thinking maybe the trustees can all, we have this here, is to, then we will synthesize and read us from you. This is all really great information for us to inform our budget priorities and how to afford, and because the budget, that's the, all this costs money, it is the vehicle towards getting what we want. It's not the thing we do, it's the vehicle we use to do the thing, all the things we do. So thank you so much for coming, this is just fantastic that you came and it's the first thing, I really, really appreciate it.
Dice que van a tomar en cuenta todo lo que dijeron, que escribieron todo y que se lo va a llevar a la otra persona, que van a compartir toda la información y tomar en cuenta.
Yeah, right here.
But don't, yeah, don't miss the opportunity to go into the mini boardroom.
Read this right now, the thing now, and read it with us.
Very nice. Well, I'm gonna get going here because as soon as we're done here and we go through a couple of questions, we're gonna end up going from here and then back over to the board graphic. So over here, just for introduction, Sam.
I'm Sandy Morrow, I work in October.
Ben, I work at W O M, just being the principal down there, so we'll come to your facilitators today, our trustee.
Ryan, Dan. We have two questions that we'll answer here, and we'll go through them, and it might occur fairly quickly, and if it does and we wrap up, so sooner they'll just go off and enable it to, if they're ready, they'll get back to that. If we have any tactics that are not necessarily budgeted, we have parking lot over here, we have, you pass around if you have, wow, if I would've known it did that earlier, I would've like, you're asking a couple of them. So, you can get one of these and you can put it into our parking model over here by it.
Alright, so we'll start with the first question. One of the most important outcomes to you, public education, it's a very large, very broad question, and we were talking, break the stuff, it splits very quickly philosophically on what you see as the purpose of, what is that called, community education? So, can it be, take a moment to think?
With one question?
Sure.
Why, why are you considering extending the levy instead of trying to pass another one? Like, you know, because it seems like that would alleviate a lot of the challenges that we have. And I was wondering if you, why, why you go ahead and try to pass it?
So one of the things here, just kind of one of those kind of norms for you is we're through this, is if we have questions or comments, this won't end up being a question answered for board members that's here. Their task right now is to simply be a listening board, try to take it all in so they can bring that back to the larger group. But what you have is a question that's valid, and we'd love to get it onto a sticky, we'll put it over here, she'll try to put it on there, and make sure that the board gets that meaningful answer directly.
I'll just follow that up with an affirmation of your question, 'cause I just remember the years in the valley that we passed the levy every two years and the community supported the district and we passed the levy every two years and the community supported a level of support that the school district had for our students. And that level of support was above and beyond what was legally mandated, made of, and you know, entirely to be mandated, but the communities kind of came together and said we would like to offer a lot more in the county. And we're gonna do that by passing levies every two years. And it was passed more, you know, it was just simply passed every two years. That's just, I also was kind of like thinking.
Could I say one more thing, just follow up on that, it said, it used to be, it was a super majority to pass it and then the legislature, legislators changed, finding that, and we did a simple majority, fifty percent plus one. So it seems like...
So I think we've had that captured here.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that would like to start off with our first guiding question here?
Because it seems like the most important outcome is to educate the whole child, not just educate them to pass standardized tests. And when Dr. Holmes mentioned like moving to curricular activities and things like that, it seems like so critically important to the education of the whole child that seems, we call it, in terms of...
Equity.
Okay, could you help me with the other discussion? Educated child beyond academic test out? Standardized test out? That's good, test out.
Can I capture all of what we were...
Do you want to stand on equity? Does anyone want to stand on equity of that?
That's for me. And so, just making sure that what we offer at one school, or, you know, or give an opportunity at other schools as well.
It's a great start, let's move on.
I think it's important to have arts and humanities, this is what we've been giving awards year after year for extending arts and humanities, but music are, I'm not gonna start here. Important for a lot of kids that don't fall into the necessarily sports category or, you know.
They call that social emotional, it's a kind of code of classwork. So in addition to sports, activities.
So I see kind of a theme between the two, that the arts and humanities also that whole child, did you want to expand even more on whole child? Arts and humanities. I think, I think that is a separate one though too with the after-school opportunities, I think. After-school opportunities? So, and the reason why I ask that is because when we have the conversation of many, a lot of these types of things, we start to think in either elementary or middle school or high school setting, so something that might generate some thought with you is, well, some of these broader topics on how they apply actually to different levels of education that comes for kids.
Well, one thing our district has done for a lot of years is thought about the child like well into like way after like two percent, three thirty, and we might not have a legal responsibility for that, but we've, we have worked and teaching or been involved in activities opportunities, continuing work with students.
Imperative, imperative to continue to work with kids after the, after the school.
Exactly. So one of the things that I was thinking of, because I worked in a core subject, and what I also agree to is, I'm a music teacher, is just the connection between the ability for music to allow students to engage and succeed in certain subjects, so it's not just, it's not just an extra.
I think that would be a good thing to capture too, I thought that those types of offerings, essential piece of the whole.
And probably that supports that, is that they, is there engagement in arts and humanities and sports that will help them to be successful in academics? I think we need to also explore academies where those kids are not going on to a four year school, such as Autobody, Auto Mechanics, though not all kids are going to four years or eight years, they may go into a trade school, we need to address that population which is getting bigger and bigger every year.
So would you like to encapsulate that into a focus or exploration into academies or into, I guess, lack of a better term, trades, looking more into trades education? What would be a better...
Well, we talk about college and career, but we really have to focus on college.
Yeah. So maybe a better way to put it would be a healthier balance between career and college.
Not going on that academic, we need to address this population, which again, is larger, this one's declining, this one's getting larger.
Career, two Rs, one E. Thank you. I brought my laptop to that period, I did. veryonwebster.com, how it was focused. Okay, that patriotic balance focus on both college and careers, how to say, for post high school, education.
Some things to think about when you're thinking about some of the ancillary things in the outcome of public education, we have some of those must haves, pieces too, if you think about facilities, things that would actually help support some of these broader topics, things that we might need more towards to support. These are, these are the larger media items, but there's a lot of scaffolds, lots of places that we go and need these to help. Is there anything that...
I think this building, expanding this building, or this exact building, I think we can put more rotation programs into this and address these students who are not going on to college, we cannot afford it. They have a building again, but we have no Autobody, no Auto Mechanics, no, I think we could do landscaping, we have so many other areas that we can address here in this building, and it would be beneficial. Welding, same thing, plumbing. Auto landscaping, electrical, I mean, those are what our kids want, I'm not a special teacher, that's what they want, that's what they ask for.
So a question with this building also, would you envision that also at, because this is a very centralized model. You're using this facility just here, that's something we're thinking of with the other locations as well. Because we also have Cary High School. Elder entrance as well. So a broader look at facilities to support.
So what we're talking about for that is more high school.
I think that brings up a very good point though, is many of the programming pieces that's at the secondary levels, there is a progression speed from the elementary as well. As an elementary principal, I focus very heavily on the whole child. Well, we also look for passions and inspiration that kids have. But we could also tie into a middle school, high school setting. So the thought of a separation in that idea is really not as far as you have it. Things actually feel all close. We've, in Bellevue, we've actually had a long conversation about that.
We start asking, who they come in ninth grade, what do you want to do in your, so by middle school, they should already be starting to think about this now. But they know what they attract, what's, what's interesting. I mean, even an interest, they can then explore that interest.
I, I think something just came out of that as well, is the word exploration. Providing opportunity for exploring, more opportunity for exploring.
I would say everybody that looks like it's a part of the pasture. As a parking lot issue, it's not because I'm just a bit, but I would really like them for, as hard as I'm not fit, to be considered, to reconsider the, um, the contraction of the busing. I just like that, I just like.
And you know what? Hang on, real quickly. Busing is a transportation issue that supports broader ideas to hear. I think it's important to make sure that that stays within the budget conversation. I don't think it would yet, even when we're talking about busing. I think it would probably be better here. Because it is a, it is a limitation or restriction or restraint. The district would have to want to, to make sure that it can support broader, broader ideas.
Well, it does, it does charge programs.
And it could allow other, that equity base and allowing other all schools to be able to access it. Especially like community campus, because someone's going to be cut off from being able to access programs here. So here's that equity.
I would say expansion of routes, not consolidation.
Right, right. What are the outcomes we're looking for?
Yeah, we would want expansion.
Oh, the consolidation of routes.
Or, no.
Negative impact.
This would be an expansion, extension.
But the consolidation of routes had a negative impact.
Let's not keep, let's keep it positive.
Yeah, I think we're identifying the issue versus the solution.
Right.
Expand to ensure equal access to special opportunities.
To support equity.
Okay. That's our time, listen.
Six forty. What I think we might do is, and we can always jump back to if you see something. But let's jump to number two, because we're only going to have a few minutes.
Just on the parking lot, I would like to, uh, readdress that.
So number ten. What are the priorities we should focus on to achieve these outcomes? So the ideas that you may have. Place up here. Then what have so much priorities that we should focus on to achieve them?
That's another levy, a budget. That needs priority to accomplish that. How do you comment on that?
What I would do is to have a. Touch real clearly. I would love for the board to see clearly for the community. As to whether the community would like a balanced budget versus whether the community would like all of these like programs. I don't, I'd need to word it better.
Yeah, because we're mandated by state to act balanced, but you can't get away from it.
Right, okay.
Well, we can have access.
I think I understand what you're saying. And I think it goes back to the levy question. We want to support those things. Is the community willing or able to support ongoing funding, revenue, to support things? By doing that, you can maintain, meet state laws and standards. But it's a different prioritization of how we're receiving the funding. While that was a last.
You're really feeling why the board members, right? From the community. Seek more input.
Seek more input in future revenues to support.
Or is, is the question. In order to maintain what we, expanding, continuing what we have, what, so the community can have a budget, the options for supporting it potentially, like seeking more input, levy.
I guess I just, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're cutting to balance the budget versus, um, versus, um, passing levies so that we can, so that we can maintain what we've built. And then therefore, like, which will be the priority for the, for the decision?
I think part of the frustration has been not, I mean, I understand that there has to be a balance, but about. But I think the frustration's come with taking so much of the revenue, putting it into contingency funds and things like that. You know, try to build that a million dollars a year. Really frustrating. Would that understand exactly what that would be for?
So I, I think if I'm, if I'm here, you're correct there.
Well, you can cross this whole thing out, but. Or it should seek for a community input regarding budget and funding. Is it an assumption? I mean, is the board operating under the assumption that we do not want budget or levy increases? I mean, yeah, that's assumed now, but maybe the community does want to increase the budget.
And I think if you boil it down, we're really looking at new things in revenues. Well, would that come from the one revenue stream that we could go to the community to ask for? Is that other revenue streams coming from other places, state funding or what have you? Is, is staff. What we're looking for is a area that becomes not staff.
I'm not sure.
No, that's, that's okay.
So the focus on, the focus is then on maintaining or cutting, cutting to maintain. Maybe the board should hear some other, consider some other possibilities for community.
I, I think that there's definitely a lack of trust with the community. And there needs to be some serious repair. Calendar's a perfect example of that. Levy, I'm an overwhelming pass. I'm glad to hear that the super majority's passed, and you guys asked. I think that the community would better receive a levy request if there was some good fan show on that board. And some cuts that people don't like talking about. That's admin. And admin for our size of school district is, I think, too much. And I think that the benefits that admin gets are over and above what state mandates. It's a great express. But I think that's where some soul searching needs to happen more.
So I wrote down developing trust between board and communities and bargaining budget. Can I add to that?
I put admin cuts on that.
Such as, such as a discussion?
A discussion about admin cuts. It's well over a quarter million, I just did the math.
We use these schools, they have twenty-five thousand students. And they have a community relations, communication budget that's forty-five thousand dollars.
That's forty-five.
So for us to have.
Two hundred and fifty.
Fourteen percent of the population, they don't have, they have five times.
It's hard money right there. Retirement benefits for our admins are. They share on what teachers are getting.
But they're negotiated now, aren't they? So please, like, give me other information. Or just change the negotiation.
No. When Carol's contract is written in a way that they can, they can change those retirement benefits at any time. But as long as all admin are. So there's, I just talked to Brian, he said there's twenty-five or twenty-six admin positions. By that, that's a lot of money. I mean, I think that we have a lot of money. Several hundred thousand.
So you want the board to be sensitive to some of those concerns?
Look, that's an easy cut that the community can go, okay, it's not hurting our students necessarily. Is it? And maybe I'm wrong.
That's, that's a, that's a whole discussion.
That I think our board has been afraid to cut them. If we have a training meeting, we're.
So one of the things, that was on the, the basic presentation on the budget, was that certain cuts were promised. And.
It's always a trade.
Base, certain cuts were, I'm, I'm not sure about.
About the levy?
Yes, when they passed the levy, they said cuts would be made in certain areas. And are we?
I think they said cuts were made before the levy was passed, they already made like one point three million.
Yes, yes, they're, and there were, and there were also cuts to admin.
Yes. And they are not cuts anymore.
No, they are, they are cuts, so I, I feel that. I can totally, that's a good. But it's something to take a look at. When we talk about salaries and benefits, we talk about salaries and benefits as a, as a.
And I guess when I'm talking admin, I'm not talking about students. I'm talking the district office member is where I'm more concerned about. And I don't, you know, I don't understand why, because you're considered admin. So I don't understand why you're linked to the district office. Because I think that as a principal, you're more hands-on than, than a district office person. That's what, so I just don't understand why that, if I, if we, if the board said, hey, you know, we're going to have six percent of our retirement benefits for all admin, why doesn't that have to, why can't they just distinguish between our schools and district offices?
The, and one of the things, when you look at admin, the district, D O staff, persons, building administration, there's one other piece that's, that's a different negotiating contract. We follow a different set of rules. We follow a very similar set of rules in the street, we certify teachers. Our organization as administrators also negotiate for what we have in our benefits. We're also linked to the certified staff in that manner. So when they have, we have, I don't know, they flow, it's just, it's now linked in that manner.
Does it have?
In order to achieve what outcomes here that you're speaking about, as far as this, how we're connected to teachers or how we're connected to administrators. It's a, it's a question, I actually don't know the answer.
So I think we're getting into a little question and answer that we're going to order on right now. There, but I will say from my perspective as a teacher, twenty-four years in the district, there are things that I am concerned about that I would never seem to report better. I would never express anything. So I think the trust issue goes to the board and the community, and also staff too. That the staff has a trust in the board, that they will act as a sounding board for some of our concerns. But I'm, but I'm just a scribe, so I know, so goodbye.
I don't know if it's a part of that issue that you were talking about, maybe like bring it to the board's, maybe you're. He's taking. It'd be interesting, lovely to explore that, like, why can't we celebrate district offices and, and people that are.
And to be honest with you, I, I don't know the answer. I would say the answer's probably not someone's statement. I don't, I don't know the answer to.
Salary schedule and sort of, and the classified staff's salary schedule, so.
And when you, when you, when you look at administrative, administrative salary schedule that you can, it's actually delineated by building administration versus D O staff versus, property versus. Every one of them has a different price tag based on their job or job description. So to even to learn the further between me at Belmont Elementary School versus the high school. Who's got a much larger plate there. So ours is different than just by, by job description. So we have to look at that too, it's not a great. But it is, it is shown and highlighted in our salary schedules. But it's something, I think it goes back to that trust conversation too. If you can see it, you can talk through it, that understanding of how people are conversed based on what their job description is.
Right, I mean, like seeing the growth of the communications department over the last three years. You know, and then you come to the taxpayer for a levy request. But that doesn't shine. And I think you get a lot more positive, I think, positive results if. That, that's just an example.
And I think we can keep that in, did we capture that there?
As part of the trust issue with the board?
That's a trust.
Could we? They used to do a three thousand sixty reevaluation of the super large campus. And haven't done that now since we've had the super large campus. And that, I think, hugely turned people trusting that they had in the, the, the consideration.
When you say three sixty, is that like from?
It was staff and some parents and some students.
So I'm, I'm trying to think back in the history to some point. There was a, a point within Blaine County Schools, there was a, we used to do that. At a new number of levels, including certified staff. I was part of that process. And it's, it's been quite a while.
Was Dr. Lewis's here, he started that? And then it kind of faded out?
And it, when it started, it was almost, it was like a. It never really was, it was never a common practice. A lot of people were asking to be part of that, just to try it out.
One of the things I would like to ask on that, is there any way we could, I'm not sure about it. We used to have property, the district did, and there's a plaza down past Bellevue. Is there any way, any of that property could be sold as in the, the draw?
We actually started that process this beginning of just last year. And I'm sure it was about, actually forty or fifty properties were sold up. And the board had, had permission.
They wanted to cancel it because by law, if they were to sell them, it just returns back to the state.
It goes back to our landlord.
What you're also saying is planned for the future, not just two and four years down the line. That's me, what we have, what our needs, how we, how it changes.
Looking at, at solid assets. Looking at, at solid assets, benefits in the future.
You started about this building, it's been such a connection to the community, and that there's been whispers about moving that, that district office.
And, and you would talk about forcing status with the community, you are going to be in Portland.
Yep.
They're not really talking.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
So, so when we take a look, and just, just a sounding board, is the yin and yang. When we look at extraneous properties that could benefit what our revenue incomes might be, so far, intake, balancing that off, do we maintain a property for those offices to be somewhere else, or do we jettison those properties and sell them? It comes, it comes with those properties. And again, that's the reason why we did this, is because, so looking at, if we're paying to maintain and to keep up those buildings, that comes in an ongoing cost versus a place where we already absorb those costs already. So then we'll be at a place of cost savings. Now, the budget discussion though, when we look at priorities, and we say that our number of priorities are students, and if those priorities are into the balance between college and career-ready, and that impacts that, and that means that, so that could possibly part of these guidance. So it's important that we bring up, those things in the first year could be the game to that end. So this makes sense, but it does best with child support.
But just, like, just for instance, like, district offices, I mean, the cost to run that building versus the cost of... Which is like, Apple's market, this building is more expensive versus the district office there. So to consolidate over here, with that, they're just taking on bigger, they're, they're taking on more expense. So there's, this consolidated with district offices here is not...
They're already paying for it.
Yeah, but you've got partners here, like CSI, VCRD, they're paying oxygen for that.
They're not talking about kicking out the prices there.
The other thing, no, I think the reason is that these buildings were built by, the vast majority of what public will pay in the next year to the school district, who don't benefit directly by having children in the schools. So it feels like the more we can open our facilities, the more it, even if it's, they're paying for it, but it gives them a sense of ownership.
See, I think, I think you guys were bringing up a really, really good point. And one of the things I want to focus back to though, is when we look at these as priorities for achieving outcomes for students. You can't have that conversation without talking about the political side of how we make decisions and how we actually balance.
Well, I mean, it kind of, I understand, but you're still saving money, you're still trying to fucking save. And I, and I don't think it's saving money, but I don't think it's necessarily saving money.
And I think if you're strong in your, in your thoughts of that is a priority, you want to make sure that this stays whole, to make sure that we can service students.
Let's make a suggestion, go and read the ministry from the last board, that describes in some detail how it would save the district money in the long run by consolidating, by moving the office here, it's actually saving money.
And then what would you talk about, you know, that, that, it's not that old.
Talking about selling it.
But not, but, but, and, and, but, but, and all those other things will stay here.
Right now, the, the county's losing money on this building, renting it out, they're not making a profit, they're losing money every single month. Because the, the rents that they're charging are not bringing, bringing in enough revenue to cover the cost of this building, to open, to have Blaine County pay for this building, to keep it open, keep all these VCRD, all the activities that they do. The school district is putting money out just to keep that aim. So the goal is, if they could, and if haven't decided yet, we're still thinking about moving the district offices here to save the overhead and everything that we're using in that building, kick the profit out of that building. It's, it's all about the cost savings, it's not about trying to push, you know, the Blaine County or the CSI or any of those outcomes, not that we're, we're going to save money and keep those as part of it. The meetings, the last meeting, if you guys want to review those, it explains a lot better than I can.
I think we're getting ready to head over, we're not there. Is there anything else you guys would like to add to this, this last part?
Would I make a suggestion to maybe put the conversation and questions around the future of community campus on the pardon law, so that it doesn't get dropped as a, as a question, would that make sense to this group? This future of community campus, question mark, does that hold the place for you guys?
So next steps for admin is, these will get consolidated by a little chance, she'll have those, the board members are taking their notes, bringing them back to the board too. They'll actually go and review what we're, the needs of this, they're starting to, who have all the different groups. And it would be really important that these aren't one to be... They're going to be... So we'd invite you to come back, and if you go up, I'll make sure that I put that on the board, just examine myself.
Welcome to Group Four, we're going to be here for so many years. My name is Debbie Goodbeck, I'm joined by services of the school district, I'm here for 22 years. And I'm Martinez, former Bellevue Elementary School, and now current director of teaching and learning at the school, and I've been head in the district for 21 years.
And we are fortunate to have one of our trustees, Kevin Garrison, join us. Kevin's going to be so busy writing notes that he is not going to have time to answer any of your questions. Okay, but we will write any questions that you have on our front of your mind, all right? So even if you have something that you want to say that doesn't relate to our, to the question you want to talk to, we'll be happy to take that input and put it out.
Okay, I'm going to explain why I just bumped him out of the chair, I'm deaf on one side. Any background noise makes it absolutely impossible. It's absolutely possible.
Do you want us to scooch in?
I probably will.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. We're going to do that.
So that's why I kind of try not to let it myself.
Come on in.
Kevin Garrison is a little bit better.
Hi Kelly. We are being recorded tonight, so that if the trustees do have questions and they want to see firsthand what was said, they have that opportunity, but don't let that stop you from talking, because this is a really good chance for you to let the trustees know your thoughts on our budgeting process and what we're going to be, what we want to work on, and what their priorities are for the district, what we value as a community. Okay, so, would you like to tell us, yeah, really quickly, so we kind of get a feel of who you are and what's your purpose, or how you are running to the district?
I'm Kim Gess, I think I'm the education director for the Sun Valley Somerset community, and I've read many programs in partnership with my hand, so the district, and our mission is to have a, present opportunities for young children to learn values and go to play as resource employees.
I'm Mary Fallow, I'm the director for, we operate office programs in all elementary schools, whatever, middle schools, we actually have offices in the, or integrated on that level, that's...
What inspired you to be here?
All right. That's it.
Kevin Garrison trusts you all.
Government class.
I'm Kristen Poole, and I have two kids graduate, and I am also the artistic director of Sun Valley's, we're a lot of great partnering programs with, with, students, both of our parents.
My name is Heather Graves, I am on the policy committee, and...
And I'm Marsha Sarsky, I'm a retired teacher, I'm on the Blaine County Ed Foundation, and so I'm just here to kind of see how this is going to best.
All right, so let's get to question one. I know these questions can be hard at times, so we're just going to give you some think time as well. So don't be afraid, speak up. Are the most important outcomes to your public education? So what do you think we mean by outcomes? It's almost like, what do we want our kids to be able to do when they leave our system? Those are the outcomes, what's important to you, what do those kids, our kids need?
What a Kirby has to do. Parents that graduate, right?
The whole time, we want them to be able to...
That could be hard.
You want them to be able to not only... Problem solve, and have some certain base skills in each discipline, but also feel like they can touch a little bit of...
They're well-rounded.
Yeah, not just, um, it seems, not just academics, not just athletics, not just the arts, but also, and they're going to, empathetic, I think.
So Angel, we took you notes, watch, if we need to add something to it, feel free.
Because there's definitely a lot of stress levels in schools, colleges.
I think you also want children to graduate from this system to be confident in their abilities to find success, whether that's getting a job, being able to take care of themselves, being able to find resources for them to, to go on to school, further their education, and understand that learning is...
So all doors are open too. Students are, are well-prepared for... Did I capture all of what you were... Yeah.
All right, can students are well-prepared for close high school, either career or, or school, college. Training school, whatever, college, school, are... College or career-ready, I guess.
They can make their, make choices, yes.
I think they need the skills and the knowledge in order to be able to, a lot of this world to be successful. And it's not through, like, you know, how smart you are, but it's like, do I have the ability to find information when I need to find information? Do I have the ability, have I given enough skills that I can find out and succeed in anything I want?
Problem solving at some level, and self-expression too.
And it's not just, it's not just the last skills, it's also emotional and social skills.
So you're having other issues, you know what resources to use?
Exactly.
We call that social-emotional learning, it's kind of coded that way. So that, I think, is also communications, being able to communicate what you need or communicate, um, well, and interest yourself, whether that's finding a job, whether that's volunteering, what, giving back to people.
I can say that every student has a, their, their potential, their, their potential, whatever that looks like, and that kind of...
What did you guys think you would get, that you haven't gotten?
What do you want out of your education?
Opportunities during school or opportunities...
What kind?
Yeah, what would be an example? Something that might generate some...
Social learning.
Expressing themselves.
I think we missed the self-expression.
Yeah, that's good. Curious, have some thoughts.
Maybe a little more, or I would like to see in a classroom, maybe more like, you know, a little student, just in a controlled classroom.
Oh, that's good. In the classroom or in your grade, or both?
Classroom.
Do you think that's about class size or just about the sort of environment?
I feel like we have to go so much, or maybe, I suppose, sometimes the schedules are so tight, we just have that we only have time to attract other students, we usually go with our own special group, so we don't have, we can't really express to other students.
Our next question is going to get to how, how, if these are the important things that we want to do, how do we get there? So we'll be curious to get your input on that too.
So you mentioned that the, the classrooms feel rushed with the time, so when you're saving more time, you're talking about per period, per class, like fewer classes?
I feel like, um, well, the material that needs to be learned, maybe should, not once you cut some of the material out, maybe like, um, explaining more so it becomes more efficient, I think.
Mm-hmm, you said efficient.
So rather than learn this much, you'd rather learn this much and know more about it?
So you call that deeper?
Easier learning.
Like a vision, you know, a visual way to present the material.
Okay, let me read the question again, in case we haven't had everything, we're getting some think time. What are the most important outcomes to you in public?
I think that, to expand on what you were saying, we have opportunity in our district is to, um, to not be afraid of stepping outside whatever that boundary is, whatever that social boundary is, and, and so that, maybe cases that are, that allow you to cross those otherness boundaries, I don't know how to say it.
Oh, great, to step out, yeah. Take risk?
Yeah. It's a less social environment. It's social, it's social and learning interactions, so that you're, if you're going to, whatever the next thing is, that you're not afraid of, like, it's not all someone else.
So what fearlessness you capturing?
Maybe, maybe. Maybe just come closer, it's a skill, it's not, it's, it's, it's by the same environment where you can speak out, where you can speak out and not be, not feel like you're going to be chastised, where they feel like your peers are going to come down on you, in a safe environment, that you can, especially yourself.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? So when Carol talked about the, one on the ground, one on the box, one on the boxes, the whole idea of equity of education, last year we got some number one, we're already closing the achievement gap. Is that what, is that what our students, we're economically visible to parents that are struggling with, we're seeing, is that what it would be? Is that, do we consider that one of our core values of our...
I wonder if that's leading us to this next question. Perhaps we're ready, if we have something that comes to your mind on what's important for an outcome, we can go back to that, but let's ask this one. So if all those...
Is that a outcome that the community believes in?
That everybody should have equal education, no matter what?
Have the same opportunity to achieve, achieve the same result.
I think that's public...
But I think that's what public... How could you not, how could you say that I can get better, you know, I, I have an opportunity to receive more than you do? That's what public education is about, and I think that everybody has that opportunity, but I think sometimes we need... But I think sometimes we need to provide more options for some students to get that opportunity because they don't, for whatever reason, it might take me longer to learn something than somebody else, but I still deserve that opportunity. Now, maybe I get some extra help in some way in order to achieve that, you know, but I...
And that's a very good question then asking, like, so we have me, let's say, and I have, I don't, I'm not coming into the school the same level as you are, so I'm going to require more resources. So, are you asking if allowing me those resources to get to where I'm in the thing, is that worth the public? Good, that's what I was asking.
Did Angel capture here with equity, that's what public education is all about?
And I guess, when I looked at it, the only way I can equate, when I looked at those pictures, I looked differently because I'm really short. I would have said, if those, I would have asked, like, and what you're saying with equity is why am I punished? Because I'm short. I still deserve the same education you do. You're taller than me, but I deserve the same opportunities to get to where you are. Even though, then we can get there the same way. Right. Do you have to, now it's passing again, but I still deserve that opportunity.
So, I'm wondering if you're, you're somebody needing accessibility, like I said. We all start off, and there's no way of starting off with...
And that's what makes, that's what makes our world so good is because we are all so different. We started to develop opportunities. We all should be able to get to where we need to.
But I also understand the young boys, because there are things, it's clear that, I mean, the social norms are defined, you know, as I say, by the dominant class. You know, and some people who are not in that dominant class do not always have the same social, most social and equity, and they can't always, or they don't have the resources, maybe they don't have a home, maybe they don't have them because they weren't educated in that, in that level or that norm, or they don't come from, you know, a standard house that has two educated parents. Their norms are different, all of our norms are different, so are there ways at the school that we can, can help provide some of those social and cultural capital that will help everybody have those same things? What it is that it takes to make sure that everybody does not necessarily come from the same background?
I think that kind of goes to marriage, where every child deserves the opportunity to discover the potential in what they're capable of doing.
Regardless of where they're starting.
Opens it up to all.
And I do think that that's, I do think that's an important...
And the other outcomes, where the way to get it might not always be in the normal eight-hour school day. You know, there are other opportunities that we can give children that are going to get to those outcomes that are not in the eight-hour school day, especially socially and emotionally, and those kind of things, you know, to interact with other students that aren't happening in the school day. Express your opinion that's not happening, you know, like people...
Yeah, are there other ways, are there other resources that the school can directly to even not provide? Because I think it's important that the school, as an outcome, has a good relationship with the other community partners and the other people who might be able to provide that.
That's what's coming to my mind, is that this is a place where community partners step in and provide different kinds of opportunities, different ways to learn.
That might help we get there.
And they're also, because of the budget trenches, you have to look down into, like, what can everybody provide as a whole? So, what can everybody provide and what way can everybody help you in, so that everybody has all these opportunities and it isn't always just every half-hour school day.
Expansion. It's not been all this relationship between the community and what's in the...
Yeah, I think, we're densifying the issue very good.
We have quite a list of what's important, what we want our kids to leave school with.
I think I mentioned too that each student should have equal access to equity.
Shall we move on to the next question? Okay, good, yeah. Because now that we know what's important to us, what we want our kids to leave school with, how do we get there? What should the focus be to achieve those outcomes for this next year?
I think one is to use all the resources available, whether they're in schools or in higher, those kind of things. We have a wealth in this community, so it uses all those resources available.
And finding ways that those... We can make those resources accessible to the students, you know, because not all students have the same ability to get accessibility of those resources. Where those things happen.
A common value of all staffers of those resources, because at certain times, as a primary provider, I'm against somebody, it's kind of a brick wall, if I have a rule to follow, is not allowing that relationship and that opportunity, it really deserves a child. So, sometimes those rules will stack back, making a better and right decision. And so having a common value that that is, that is, we are a part of that whole child we're in.
Child center. We do want to, exactly, the whole child to be child centers.
Creating that culture within the district.
But I think that that also requires our partners, our participation in the sense that if there are district rules and responsibilities and there's, we're supposed to check, that we know what those boxes are, and then if we have issues with them, that we can figure out how to get through them together. I think that that's, that's a joint conversation, because there are things that the school district has to do that we don't have to do.
So, Mark, you might talk for me?
Oh, my thing.
Which is, how do, and do you not engage with the partners and age with the school district?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How do you and do you not engage with the school district?
We can put that...
So, I'm going to put it up on the parking lot, because it's a topic I'm interested in. Trying to understand what's working.
Or why do we and why do we them?
No, no, no. Basically, what's working and what's not working.
Oh, right.
And how we break down those obstacles, right? But that's a, that's a parking lot issue, but certainly something...
Are you thinking procedurally, as in what's the...
I believe that the commentary is regarding, you know, community partnerships and what it is, is key to our success. So, there are lots of ways to us, you know, taking advantage of so many resources, you know, just charitable organizations within this valley, is there 180, I think that's the number, right? So, there's amazing amount of opportunities, you know, with, you know, some of the art programs. You know, I was talking to somebody the other day about it. We used to have, believe it or not, AA programs, teaching a lot of things in the high school, that's gone away. The question, we had 10 people, I believe, participate, so why? And what happened to those 10 people, kids? So, it's a topic of interest to me, trying to understand are there ways that we can not help areas? So, I put it over there only because I'll, I'll probably want to ask for...
That's why we have...
And I think we've heard some strains throughout so far.
Yeah, some great, yeah, some interesting commentary, so thank you.
Alright, so how else do we get to all of our outcomes? What do we need to do?
What do we prioritize? What do you guys think of students? I'm interested, you know, what should your school prioritize for you as students?
I think a lot of resources are told to us, until it's taken in the school. So, knowing about the university board, it allows you to plan ahead, or, like, for...
For scholarships?
For scholarships, also for, like, college, like, I thought it was, you know, about the college council, so like, just your path, the value, I think, uh, basically that. And that came in last week, when they had, they gave to us, told us every high school, I would like to know that.
Would have been great, your freshman year coming here somewhere. Well, and that's a really great point, because I think we rely on parents knowing that, but it's really, you guys need to know.
And learning at an earlier age, you know what I mean? So, because a lot of times, like, with scholarships and those things, it's only really going to the juniors and seniors, where if you can start preparing as a freshman, you think you're way ahead of the game by the time you get to junior, senior, when all of this is happening at once.
Isn't that kind of a concept of equity, like, if you don't have parents to know these things, or have somebody in your sphere that actually, you're a couple years behind?
Yeah, that's that social and cultural capital, you know, that a lot of people don't have because their parents haven't walked them through them, and that needs to bridge that gap, the resources. Correct me if I'm wrong, are there two college counselors?
Yeah, there's two.
Millie and...
Yeah, I think there are.
So, that's... Yeah, we contract through CSI to get a transition coordinator. Been surveying three buildings to assist, especially these buildings that don't have a college counselor, to help with the transition.
And buildings mean school, right? Schools, prisons.
Like so much, yes.
Maybe you did, you already did this. Why you quite resourceless?
Time is given to issues around others and issues about unready, and how we get to exploring those difficult conversations within our communities. I mean, I know what I'm... And now it feels like maybe just certain classes, teachers do that, and it's not necessarily a whole high school. I may be wrong, I might, am I, is that happening?
You're shaking your head. Is that happening? Like, are you getting to, like, talk about other issues, you know, when they're...
Teacher, teacher, that's a habit. With some other teachers, that...
Such...
Yeah.
Such as...
The discussion about that. You know, it's not just kids in the school, you're just... Maybe that was going to be the... It's well-located for... Issues too, it's just... You get your teachers, get your teachers better. And the eight kids, that's a...
Did I capture that idea, that it's a student-teacher relationship and how important that is? Knowing, teachers knowing the students.
Now, you also, when you were middle school, wanted that too, that was something you had, or you were ready for it more?
It is, it is the anxiety that... Retirement, that's for our...
But you noticed it more in high school?
Yeah. That could be because you're more, you're more mature, ready to...
No.
More interested. Well, you understand, we start understanding before it's...
Leadership, school building, oh, excuse me.
Rob, you have a comment?
Time.
How, to use it or more of it?
I mean, I think that we have a lot of demands and a lot of different dimensions that, asking the staff, and the time to actually focus and bring something to fruition is really difficult.
Does that mean, like, longer school year, longer...
I'm not necessarily thinking of time, I'm thinking of time to work on, it's not necessarily manage logistics, time that's paid, because the trade-off is always, if we have a training, we're pulling the teachers out of the classroom to manage the training, or we're asking them to do four o'clock to six o'clock at night, and it's really an interesting trade-off.
Ten?
It's always a trade-off, and it's always, it's always kind of like continuous partial attention. You never really get that real focused opportunity to really start at the beginning, go deep.
And I saw you shaking your head on the time piece too. Tell me what that means from your point of view.
It seems like a lot of teachers, they have so much going on, it's a concern on the time that they get, that sometimes they're using class time to get some things ready, and I don't blame them, because that's so much for some of these students, there's too many favors to do, so that kind of goes into efficiency. It's a lost time where the students may be just standing on three, in three minutes. If we fill up with a, with a mat, three minutes, each kid, that's a, an hour, so...
Teachers, they need time to plan and...
They get time to plan, they go to work.
I can see that that's, my daughter's now teaching at school, there's some students from high school. That's one of the reasons, because I don't have time to, for the kids, because I'm just trying to manage the kids. I can see that that's...
Alright, how else are we going to get to all those things we said were important?
Well, I think accessibility to the resources is important, and, you know, I'll just kind of throw the element in the room in that, I think that transportation is something that was taken out of the budget in a lot, in a lot of ways, and that's impacted programs.
Especially equity of the program.
And the equity of the programs, and so I'm...
That's why we're all here. No, that, that's why we're here, is to hear the point of views of all of you, so, right? Other things?
Well, just even to add a little bit of that, is I've looked at, because I've been around since I was at school, this became, you know, the community campus, and this is one of, I mean, as, as anybody as an adult, and when I was a teacher, but as an adult, this is one of the greatest resources that you can have. It's the most amazing thing, is that literally this height, I can come in here and find all these things to do. At your age, you can find, come in here and find all the resources. As an adult, I do the same thing. And not having it deeply accessible to everybody is sad, because it's such an amazing, not a lot of, and, and coming from, like, I lived in Alaska for 10 years, in this small, small village, and your school has been, it can be, is such a huge part of the community. And this is all that whole environment.
But you made one comment, that you don't think that there's equal access to it?
Well, some kids probably can't get here.
Well, the, the...
That's the difference, it has the access, but some kids can't get here.
They can't, the transportation, my program, my at school program that is right out of this building, dropped you, there's... And it's a pre-programmed, for equity, to get the kids, so that is something, of course, I'm passionate about.
How else do we get to our goals, our outcomes? I think part of it too is, is...
You have to buy into that and support and create new partnerships, so, and... Yeah, I think you want people to feel like they have a voice, especially want the students to feel like you all have a voice, and that you're, you matter, and that your community is pushing behind you and wants you to be successful.
Like you said, that salary is amazing.
You know, I don't think that, again, I think that that's totally just a responsibility, and part of that is, the community is responsible, we're working on behalf of our students, not the future citizens. So, it's a collaboration, that we can celebrate better.
So, is it a lot of public, public need, some of the city, what is working, and you'd ask your, where you are, what part of the education system you're in, that everybody, you know, working to... What do you want your teacher with, is to get that?
Well, I think more forums where people are available to give input. I mean, that's one of my concerns, is that when we put forum, where we can talk with teachers, with school board, with other community members, I mean, the school meetings are not a forum for discussion. And that's something that's, I mean, that's really difficult. In order for these outcomes to be achieved, there needs to be forum for, for discussion, because a lot of us, like I said, have been in this valley, I mean, I have three kids went to the school as well. And so, a lot of us have been, like, for a long time, so we can have them work, and it would be nice to be, or have, have a forum for discussion. You know, the schedule being, you know, the new school schedule being, is a point, there's no forum for discussion.
And I, and I think that, from a student's point of view too, that might be, having, sometimes you want a forum, just even letting, no, like, you know, as a teacher, like, if you would have said, like, you're thinking about the three or four minutes you have in the classroom, that would have been something I would have never thought about, you know what I mean? I would have never thought about it, but if it would have been brought to my attention, you know, if there was a forum that people felt comfortable expressing their opinion, that would be really helpful, because it's like, oh, okay.
Okay, we have five minutes. Let's move back and see if we said how we're going to get to all of these important things. So, did we talk about how do we get to the whole child expectation, and how do we evaluate each child, what are the resources they might need?
It's one box, two box, one area, one frame.
Is that important at all grade levels or at different grade levels of our system?
I think it's here, in particular, here, it's one grade child, or whatever.
And I think, I think it's more than just that, I think, you know, there are also kids that slip through the cracks. So, if I slip through the cracks, I'm really nice and quiet, and I don't get in trouble, and so, it's, oh, she's such a good student, she doesn't give me any hassle, but that sometimes is because it's easier for me to slip through the cracks, that you need to get, you need to get, you know, you need resources.
And I think evaluation should not necessarily be, it should be, yeah, it comes with time to be able to do that, but there might be a child who is struggling, he's something else, but is drawn into music, and then that music is going to motivate them to expand their life, or as a sport, they can take that sport and successfully, bring that confidence and then bring it back, because they're happy, they're like, well, can't have support in their community and their...
We have two minutes.
So, how do we recharge our teachers, how do we get our teachers' stoke to come back to the classroom, what do we need, I mean, vacation's not the answer, I mean, of course they need vacations, but what kind of professional development do they, and what are those opportunities that we can provide?
Because if, everybody has, if you have, like, you have sixty minutes, you know what I mean, you just, and you didn't need to, I would be, it's almost like, it was really hard to go back because it's just more and more, and I love it, and I loved it, more and more, and more, and out of place, which you have no time to...
Well, I think that's what you said too, you've got so much information that you're trying to cram into that period, actually, you have time to absorb it, and interact with it, and have that disservice right now. My teachers, I think, have some kind of ways, I think, that teachers were given an opportunity to weigh in, decisions and have a voice, that would go into, you know, that forum, where they, that would help, I think, having, having a voice, I mean, does everybody have a voice?
Voice, in our voice? And I got the free from Amanda, and we know she tells us, so, that was a few minutes ago.
What do you have to be huge changes, huge change on responsibility, and we talk about time and resource investment, and just responsibility is, is growing exponentially, and so we, over, say, eighteen, twenty-four months, we've got a lot of time, energy, and effort, trying to give them, you turn, facilitate that growth, professional growth, ultimately, you only care about those who translate into that institution, that's, that's the only metric, really, that the, the weight... Those, what are the lines, with, with what we just talked about, you know, are those the right things, or things in the...
My question about outcomes is, outcomes are what I don't want to, and sometimes I feel that that ends up constraining, and I wonder if the teachers are not able to spend the, the time that they need, because they're focused on an outcome that is measurable, which I get, I totally get that, but when, you know, there are kids out there who are responding much more actively and for a longer period of time than they just need to be curious about, and so I, I think that that outcome driven is, is something that needs to be really sought and on a really regular basis, and that's where teachers need to be, because it needs to be balanced, you need to be, you need, you need your parents and your students...
It's way beyond, it's way beyond Lake County's posters, it's the whole education in this country, but it's like, if we're training, if we want students to be able to go out in this world and survive in the first part of society, sometimes, what I get in my assets isn't really going to set it, you know, and that's where the dilemma is in education, right, where it's come to, I think, this point.
Well, if the outcomes are that difficult to attain, then maybe the outcomes should be resuscitated.
I can give you an example, you know, the outcomes as set by the state are extraordinarily high, right, so when we're looking at outcomes, you know, like, our reading outcomes for some K through three kids, if you look at some more math, statistics from high school and secondary, so, so these are, you know, little things, these are big things, can these kids read, can they do math, the answers are no, so those are, so it's, I don't want to make it feel like it's too microscopic for an outcome, that they're big things, but we're making the investments anyway, because we have been able, you know, like, the investments we made two years ago, including specialists of intrigue.
Which, I believe we did cap it yet, the essence of that, with the wholechild.com. We just got the boss, she says like, we're a boss.
So guys, why don't we go ahead and get started, this is group five, and, so there's a couple of things I want to talk to you about, and one of them is if you have some questions that are maybe a little bit off this specific topic or something, you do have a parking lot that we can do, we can give you a sticky note, you can write down those questions, and then, and then we can give those to the board as well, but primarily, this is our focus tonight, what are the most important outcomes to you in public education? So, anyone that wants to jump right in, jump right in, and Tim will scribe for us, and then we'll get to our second question, which is, what are our priorities in VCSD, what should they be to focus on to achieve those outcomes? So, anyone have some ideas, or what are the most important outcomes to you in public education, and remember that, that we all have valid opinions, and let's make sure we honor everyone's opinion and let them speak, so, anyone want to jump in? There are any?
So, a high graduation rate, and I don't know what ours is, but ninety percent...
Ninety-one percent this year.
What, ninety-one?
For the preceding graduation.
And that's just the four-year graduation rate, there's also a five-year graduation rate, the, the tallies run in the state of Idaho, and the whole state of Idaho is up around eighty. Anyone else? How about, all, with the emphasis on all students are provided with the, just the opportunity to succeed and be prepared for it.
I'll throw in, our complete education, and that could be many kinds of different people, but, I'm Jim. So, I guess, like, when I think about my own childhood, there's the classroom, which is absolutely critical, important, absolutely vital, starting point, but set of experiences that are meaningful to have in the school district, there's more in that school experience.
So, a full, a long education, well-rounded, cultural, it could be, more than just the director, you know, that's involved, so the opportunities for the arts, and the opportunities for athletics, the opportunities for clubs, and experiences, and leadership opportunities, all kinds of things. Some mental health support for students? Because there's definitely a rise in stress levels in students, in colleges, they're reporting an increase of eight hundred percent in many colleges for, for counselor visits and things like that, so, the stress levels of our young students are much higher than so we get. Hi, Anna. Anyone else, I think, Darlene, did you ever end up again?
I was thinking of something, like, reasonable choices for post-secondary education, you know, but, but the kinds of opportunities that they have at high school are, maybe lead them to make those choices, not necessarily in college, but just some post-secondary choice.
So that they're, so that they're aware of those choices, or...
Or, if they have the opportunities to, you know, make those choices, then maybe people, by the training...
Qualify for whatever.
Right, yeah.
So, almost like a lead-in to that potential program, or, or technical school, or college, or something, so they have a little bit more focus on it.
So they can be successful when they get there.
So not only other than college, but also along...
Can I put down low-tech?
Sure. And college.
Can they put down CTE?
Yeah, CTE as well.
I'd like to comment on that, I mean, my son started off a traditional four-year college, and after spending a whole, pick up a lot of money, decided it wasn't for him, and now he's building race cars in Cincinnati, Ohio, which is what he really loves to do, so, I think that, you know, a pathway to something different, because colleges don't fit everybody.
The early childhood education, I'm trying to... Pre-K, kindergarten. I heard something about, I don't know if anyone else heard that, but Idaho may be funding more kindergarten?
No.
Yeah, it just came up.
Governor gives...
Yeah, exactly. Anyone else want to throw anything out?
How many kids do we have in pre-K, I mean, there's a way in the state, or...
I don't know.
So remember, these are our most important outcomes. Most important outcomes, and that could be an outcome that, that we have kids that are ready for first grade, that could be one of our outcomes, because we do have, in Lake County historically, we have a real imbalance of how many, how many kids come to the first grade. Anyone else?
How's our Hispanic population, kids that graduate from high school, how is their graduation rate, is it comparable to, to the other schools?
There's breakdown, I don't have a precise, exactly, but I would say that that's lower than Caucasian, Hispanic is more than Caucasian, percent-wise, I don't have the exact numbers, I think maybe seventy percent, sixty-seven, versus ninety. I think we're showing at least trending towards improvement there, like, over years over.
And looking at our district, sometimes, a better thing is not to look just Hispanic, but look at English language development, so, a lot of our Latinos that are Latino, but they have a good base in English as they come into school, are projecting just as high as any group, but a lot of our kids that are having to fight the challenge of learning a new language while they're in school, sometimes they have some lower achievement rate, so, even within the Hispanic community, there are variations of our, of our success rates. Good, any other more outcomes, or do we want to move on to the next session?
I just had another, I think, supporting need here, I think, an outcome of public education has been meaningful to my son, daughter, we both went to high school, is exposure to our whole diversity, and, I can take it from, and then, it's very important to, to our family.
Social development?
exposure to diversity, or partnership, being part of a total community of students and teachers that represent a whole different diverse set of people and individuals and backgrounds, is very important to us.
Well, especially if they're in a very sheltered or cloistered type lifestyle and surroundings, and then if they go out into the broader world and see a lot of different people with a much greater diversity, it may have a, a shocking or jarring experience for them, if they've never experienced it through their whole high school and young adolescence.
I got one for you, Bruce. That they know how to address an envelope and buy a stamp, no, that's, I just had a personal experience with that.
Well, would you call that some life skills?
It's life skills.
Life skills, so just some really good, strong life skills, bouncing a check foot, you know, being able to write a letter, those kind of things, so good life skills.
Maybe to, back on life skills, how about civility? Character asset. With the, with the diversity, can we include the word inclusion too?
After civility, I think, inclusion. Especially now. Any more, or would you like to go on to priorities? Okay, I'm sensing we're moving. Okay, so what are the priorities that our district should focus on to achieve everything you just listed, what are some things that you really want to see in our schools, and are the focus of our district, and maybe not just little side cards, but actually be a main focus?
Is there a way that we can see what we listed?
Oh, yeah, we can put these two up. Well, you have your memories. So what are the priorities in VCSD should focus on to achieve these outcomes?
Someone mentioned in our group of just, the classroom opportunities and maybe, and smaller, like, the smaller classroom ratio to teacher and student, is that what we're mentioning here?
Sure, so student-teacher ratio.
Student-teacher ratio, of making sure some aren't falling into the cracks or something.
So in other words, it would be maintaining lowers...
Balance, so if you are trying to help each student, I know it's rough, but... Yeah, it's not like we don't have it already, but we want it to contend, yeah.
Well, I never, I don't know how to state this, but we are very highly qualified teaching staff, and, you know, how do we focus on maintaining that level?
So maintaining a highly qualified staff, and we do have a very high number of teachers that are eligible for retirement, and we've, we've been saying this for a long time, but that number is peaking up, so we have a lot of people that potentially could retire in the next, one or two years, and even less than five.
Have you heard that number?
We have to retire, right?
Yeah, eighty teachers, eighty teachers can retire within the next two years.
Well, we have, we need to cover, we need to maintain a high quality staff that allows to hire them as well. Where the higher.
Because that, I guess, we have one higher and teachers manage.
Yeah.
Because it's cheaper. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Because a lot of districts in Idaho, they have to lose, if they lose a veteran, they are ordered by the superintendent through the board to hire someone who has minimal, less than five years' experience. And lowest, low cost as possible, it's just their ratio. And, and that's not necessarily their fault. That's all.
It's what they get a hold of.
Okay, editorializing again, I apologize. How's it going?
New our mentoring program?
Okay, mentoring program. I think that could be like in the same.
Yeah, retention.
Then, then you kind of right here, the same idea of maintaining a highly qualified staff, onboarding people with mentoring programs.
Containment too.
Yep. Because that first couple of years can be vital if that teacher feels supported and good professional development. And I think someone did mention professional development too. I might just throw PD in there as a subset of maintaining a highly qualified staff. What are some other priorities that we should focus on? Jim, I know you've talked quite a bit about the complete student and having all these, you know, programs available to them, and I think that's a very valid point. Would you say that would be one of our priorities of making sure we?
It would, and one way maybe to do that, I mean, it sounds sort of organizational. The phrase always jumping in my brain is a priority to DCSD, if they think of new ways they could empower partnerships.
Okay.
Empower, when you have the key word there, empower partnerships to help with that big goal.
Okay.
But clearly they have a budget concerning environment. There's an argument that so they should do everything right, but maybe there could be a switch in focus. There are, what are ways that we can, we work with partners to try to do some of the same things, but focus on empowering.
Can you give me example? Can you give me example, just like something to jot down?
So some partners offer programs and services that by, not necessarily by direct intention, maybe impacting their ability to provide those services, which is just because of budget cuts or other things. Maybe you think about that cut differently if exactly the maintenance of those funds to enable something like, you know, after-school program for, for music or whatever it might be. It has incremental value about that, empowering this overall outcome.
Like my friend Karen, she's the administrative of YCA Partners School, there's mental health, powers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, yeah. Like Mount Rides, like. Some belly centers, some yards, some belly simply.
I mean, the other example, obviously there's a lot of conversation about this transportation. Sure, it's an operating cost and it has to be worked out in this context, but maybe with that cost in terms of the ability to empower partners to help with some of those overall.
So can we put down transportation?
Yeah, as a, as a.
Well, just one of those other things.
It's a factor. We need to be looking at those issues we have to improve on.
So not like the bus running the school, but the schools running the bus. If you see what I'm trying to say. In other words, is transportation at the tail wagging the dog? I don't know if you get what my meaning is. And sometimes that doesn't happen where, where you have a great program, but all of a sudden, you know, a cut in one certain support thing can impact the program and its effectiveness. Can I just go ahead and flip over it? So let's look back.
You guys are good.
So, you know, we, we haven't really talked about the diversity or life skills or the graduation rate specifically, all students, capitalized all students, post-secondary opportunities. Are there any other focus points that we would need to maybe hit exactly what we put up earlier?
They're repeat, you know, maintain.
Our advanced courses.
Okay, are there self-opportunity courses?
AP.
Well, you have your AP and a little credit, but then you also have your CTE programs for your, your walking out certificate of high school, hopefully to advance, and then they can go from there if they want to advance some more.
Exactly.
Well, that's a CTE academy, yeah.
And then.
And CTE academies or whatever.
So our counselors get training on mental health or are they just, or why do we need mental health?
No, they definitely have a dual purpose. They, they do have these administrative functions that they, they must do. And I say must do is that's not the favorite part of your job, but then they spend a lot of time, you know, with, with scheduling and working in Skyward. And so like I'm speaking in general, like my counselors, the high school counselors, you know, so social workers do have more opportunity to work specifically in that. But the counselors are taken away from their role as counselor oftentimes by working extensively in the scheduling and bureaucratic part of the school system, which is vital for us to make sure every kid has a place to sit. You know, as basic as that, but they still have a ton of time and they still do a lot of work, running groups and meeting kids individually, helping parents. Like sometimes your counselors know families better than anyone in the school.
Can Ami have a presence in their school?
Yes, and we have a, we have a community resource, and I'm trying to remember her name because it just came up this weekend.
Christine?
Yes, and she comes into our school and she runs two groups for us, and so that's an assist that we have. You know, the Flourish Foundation, other groups like that, and we do have groups that come in and work with kids if they happen to go to high school and some elementary students as well.
That carries a huge element. And I think that's why a lot of kids make it.
What do you guys think of graduation?
Without that, I think we lose the district, we lose more kids.
You know, if you, if you want to look at the very first one, the high graduation rate, just as an example, how can a district focus on that? We had an old drug policy that was, was pretty draconian, you know, five days out of school if you did X, Y, Z, nine, ten, four, three, all these other things that parents had to do. And a lot of kids fell through and they were kicked out of the district. They were expelled under our old drug policy, especially if they had a second or third offense. And then we also noticed that the kids who were not graduating had about a very high percentage in the seventies, even maybe eighty percent were involved in drug issues during their, their educational years in the school system. So we really changed that policy to build up more prevention support rather than just saying, you know, zero tolerance and then seeing our graduation rate fall to because of that. So that's a focus point that the district can do to help that very first highlighted point right there.
So do we, would you be saying that we do have a really together, put together an in-house type suspension to help those kids? Sometimes I feel like because they are troubled and, you know, it's not, it's not the kid, it's the drug, that that causes so much distraction and issues in our whole high school that affects everyone else doing the best that they can do. So do we have that type of things or do we need to make sure we have that funding for that in-house suspension and giving them the help they really need? And they obviously, when they sit in the class, I mean, it's like, and it comes back to even, because we have free lunch and breakfast for everyone. No one should be stopping them from eating, why does everybody get free lunch and breakfast? I mean, there's so many things that cause that change in the classroom, like.
Well, wellness, can we kind of talk about maybe just student wellness, but also just attempting to keep kids in school as much as possible? You know, because that's, there's a lot of good studies on the school and prison pipeline that's developed throughout America over the last thirty to forty years with zero tolerance policies. And that was one of our reasons why we changed our drug policies and did get in-school suspension programs, like we've had one at the middle school for a long time. But under district policy, I was forced to boot a kid, you know, for five days out of school, and then you're just putting a kid in crisis in a much bigger crisis. So it's a good example of trying to think about social justice and who are the victims of these type of policies.
I think the focus needs to be on relationships.
Absolutely. Student to student, student to teacher, teacher to teacher, admin to teacher.
Superintendent.
Parents.
Absolutely.
Parents were all such.
Absolutely. And, you know, right, it's not just the kids with substance abuse problems, but it's, in my family, it's the three-oh kid that's having issues too. I mean, it's just not the substance abuse problems, but it's anxiety.
Oh, just mental health in general.
And the gay kids sometimes, that's a real challenging.
That I have a dead teacher relationship that's important to us.
And the graduate too, obviously. But I think that falls into.
And also the middle school one.
Well, I think that's this right here, student wellness, because it is, it is, the anxiety levels in our, our youth right now compared to even a decade ago are, are much higher, much higher. And kids are on a straightaway, very compliant path to college, are dealing with a lot more, you know, quarters in their life than they used to. They used to have a pretty straightway all the way to the job world, and now that's, now you have to find your own path, and it's very different than it was, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. So we have about ten minutes. Anything else that's burning inside you that you really want to get up here?
Well, just, so here we are in budget exercise, right? And clearly what, great data that Brian shared from Carol on this five-year budgeting scenario, right? Where basically you're looking at surpluses for two or three years to fund what would be expected deficit as a year or four, that's the last word. So that's really smart, fifty match profile. I guess what I might say could be, or your priority, or at least from my point of view, is how do you address that problem? My personal trick is that to cut on the cost line to develop more of that income, goodness in the short run, so you can solve them on the back end is one approach. But I think in this community, I believe a more positive approach might be to say, why don't we build a positive case for when that deficit comes and take a hard look at the cost today, but potentially don't, don't cut in front.
Right, right.
And so, you know, there's no right answer on this. It's just being a financial planner myself, there are different approaches to solving the same problem. And in some communities, especially ones that maybe have a different take on public education, sometimes, you know, this idea of like, we gotta, it's gonna hurt, we got to, if they really make people pay attention, they could lose these things by some cuts, and then maybe they'll supply that. I believe that actually in a positive case, that this community would support it. That doesn't mean I think you don't take the hardest, most tough one of all your costs, but that's, that's something to think about, sure the approach.
And the thing about any school district, ours is labor intensive. And we are going to see some shifting in the financial landscape as far as what we're paying in salaries over the next five years. Not as much as you might think when you see, you know, an eighty-five thousand dollar teacher retire, and you see a fifty thousand dollar teacher come on board. You might say, oh, we just saved thirty-five thousand, oh, you really didn't. When you get down to it, Brian can explain a lot better than I can. But there is going to be some movement in this over the next five or six years that will impact that bottom line and, and those deficits. So that's something to keep your eye on too, and Mr. Fletcher knows, have a lot more than I do about it.
So you weren't really encapsulating that as, as just sound financial planning, just because he has a real focus for the district not to be in a constant upcoming deficit situation.
It's a bit of how do you plan? And so I believe the approach and the program with financial.
Approach.
There are different approaches, not just offer, you know, just a different way to get to the same outcome.
You're saying what a positive spinoff, right?
It is, I mean, at its core, there's this idea that you cut down, get some money in the bank, get some money later, but you're planning then to halve the deficit. So you're spending more time now, not cutting, but selling the value without tinging. And then going to deposit investment to the community for like a lot.
Because, right, we can't accomplish a lot of this. We can't accomplish, first of all, this doesn't happen without resources, without dollars.
Right, but the plan right there was to have two or three years of surplus, right? And so if they did their cuts, who wants two or three years of surplus? We're going to fill out scrutiny for the community. Another argument is they say, now look at all this cost, we want to hold a balanced budget for two or three years with line of sight to a bigger deficit in that four, five, six year, but we're going to build the case and plan on the next.
And salaries and benefits, you're just going to increase, they're going to go down, unless what you said.
How many did you say we're going to retire in the next five years?
Potentially eight.
Potentially eight.
And like you said, that the salaries may lower, maybe five.
And that's just eligible to retire. And the other thing you have to consider is as you, if someone retires at a high salary, someone comes out at a lower salary, the other thing is there's always all these other costs that are increasing every single year. Insurance and maintaining our facilities and things like that. So it's not the big wow, you know, that you think it is, like you were saying.
And I'm not quitting, it's carrying me out, so. I don't think this is.
Well, we are. Yeah, Darlene? Okay, hang on, I can hardly hear you.
Teacher boy. Teacher boy. So when we, when we know our store and learn their interests, what I like about working now is if we could maintain all the levels that we have from all the schools to kind of pursue their interests and who knows where that's going to take them. I was thinking of the article that was getting big for my forum for students and that she directed for us, her mentality of technology.
Yeah.
So, so that if you have these programs and you have clubs and activities for students to get involved in, that they're like springboards for them, and I don't know if there's a ways to make sure we maintain those or often more. I mean, when I was a junior high school, it was almost like there was a club for everything except the clothes.
As a teacher, like women on the bench.
So maintaining, you know, after-school clubs and organizations to keep students just to keep them.
Those were the partnerships.
So guys, we do have about seven minutes. We want to take a little tiny break here, we can transition back over there. And then the board is going to kind of do a summary of what they learned. They're each going to talk a little bit about it here. And if you do have any questions, we have some sticky notes, if you want to write them down, we can put them in our parking lot, okay? Guys, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.